Big wax Steve or do we change it for the new?
No, I'll change it up. And then you're on. I I'm going with big black.
It's. You like big white?
I.
Try something. Try something different to start twenty twenty four.
We do this.
Even staying new hanging day. Uh, welcome everyone to the uh, welcome and good new year, everyone. Um, that's the Monday, January eighth committee of the whole of men and operations. Um, and I think technically we're calling this one budget meeting number one. Uh, although we do have some other items on here uh, that are outside of budget. So. Uh, having said that, uh, I need a motion to approve our agenda. Moved by council ward seconded by council smell. Any changes additions corrections? Hearing none, I will call the question then in favor. Okay, disclosure of junior interest conflict of interest in the dinner in each of their of. Does anyone have any declarations? Hearing none, I'll move on to delegations and presentations. I don't believe that there. Sorry, business arising from. Previous committee of the whole meeting minutes, uh, if any, thank you, Clark. Uh, does anyone have any business arising from our previous minute?
I'm just wondering if we have an update on our official plan amendment um, uh, submission. I don't know if we've got anything back or not, so. Know if we have an explanation or if that's a question for later, but.
What?
To staff looking to staff.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
The 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 here our application was submitted and. Just for Christmas, I'm not gonna give you exactly that link because the name is not I could, but it was supposed to be handed to the county. Feedback received right on campus was in council, of course, on that receipt, but just before the application was uh, submitted.
Good, okay. And any other business arising? Right, hearing none. Um. Delegations or presentations? I don't believe there are any. I'm seeing shaking of head consent agenda. There are no. Items on consent agenda, so we will. Move on to seven. Uh, which is discussion item, which is capital budget overview. Remind everyone that it is an overview, um, and it's a very healthy and lengthy meeting tonight. Um, we're gonna see this again. Several several times, um. And and I don't, we're being asked to receive this item, correct? Just not even receive it, just. Just hear hear the delegation, then we'll deal with the items as they come on on item eight. Good, all right. So then I am turning it over. To to the president. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, um, so just to give a bit of background, um, I've I've attached the. Uh, the budget summaries for both eleven and rate based capital. Um, business cases will follow. Um, there was a lot of business cases, so it is actually split between budget meeting number one and budget meeting number two. Uh, but they will talk to each individual project. Uh, that's not what uh, this is about right now. So. Uh, currently with everything listed on eleven days, uh, capital expense, we've got uh, just over six point three billion in the budget. Um, what we have funding for uh, is is somewhere in the range of between four million and four point two million. Uh, and that will be funded from our operating surplus, uh, reserves and grant funding. Uh, should council decide to go above four point two million, uh, it would require a portion of the capital budget to be finalized, sidelined through debt or an additional capital level. Uh, for rate based, uh, most of the items are are just routine uh, maintenance in nature. And will be covered from existing reserves and levies that we already have in place. Uh, with no additional rate increases at this time, uh, in July, there will be a full summary view of the cardinal water and wastewater rates. Um, this will be, uh, will have the effect of the the fracture for the cardinal wastewater from last year. And then also through the um, your uh, project. Uh, to to see if we can get some more uh, people on on water. Uh, so what stats all done will have a full summary view of those fees in the model. Um, the right project on the capital uh, side for the rate base. He is uh, reading street uh, with the water service replacements that'll take place when the road's repaired. So if the road project is approved, we will proceed. With the uh, uh, water repairs and if the the road gets deferred, so will the. Uh, the uh. The water service replacements, because that'll be done at the same time if the road is stopped. So I won't go into uh, any of the details here, uh, just because of covered by the business cases. The only thing that is attached here is just another uh, summary of our reserves. Um, and also on the the far end. I I have included for things like CCBF, uh, OSIP and uh, for the fourth. Um, what are twenty twenty four contributions to those uh, reserves are. So. For the court of one million dollars that we take in uh, in uh, management fees, two hundred and forty one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars goes into the capital fund. Uh, which we know to have access to in twenty twenty four. Uh, uh, OSIP are allowing us five hundred and fifty eight thousand. Uh, nine hundred and ninety one dollars and for uh, CCBF or gas tax. Uh, two hundred and thirty five thousand nine fifty. So the amount that's in the twenty twenty three year today balance plus. The number for twenty twenty four is what we have available in our budget for twenty twenty four. So. Uh, things like OSIP is very project specific. So in in here, I've I've uh. Allocated that to primarily the Reed Street Bridge or sort of uh. We're street bridge. Uh, should that project uh, not go ahead for whatever reason, I will allocate that some. And one thing to you is uh, just with. On on going back to the eleven base funding, uh, for that funding left to allocate. Um. Until we get to that four, four point two million dollar number, uh, then I'll allocate the rest of those splits. But the four point two is made up of the one point nine million that we already have from grants. Reserves and work in process. The one million estimated operating surplus, which will be finalized until we do the operating budget. And then I've got this one million, three hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars that can be allocated. Primarily to Rose, because that's the only thing that they allocate funding for. So the sum of those three numbers is just a little bit over four point two million dollars. So that's what we have for funding available for capital. Uh. That pretty much is as deep as my mind though, because the capital does need to be. Talked through on an individual piece by piece basis. But I will, if there's any questions. Right now that are more high level of nature.
Uh, well, just before we, before I open that up, okay. So as we go through from item I on onward, there's, you know, it basically discusses everything on. On this list. All of them or most of them have recommendations.
Correct.
So. And and we're gonna hear the business case for them. And in each one, I'm just, you know, going through, say, the the plow truck one right now. The committee recommends that a council approve option two to purchase five ton plow truck. Okay, so. At three seventy. So if we do that item by item, we're approving the list. At what point are we not going to? Are we expected to go through and approve through the business case? Or are we gonna have one discussion at the end? Because this is gonna end up in. Hundred little discussions.
So, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would suggest that go through the business case. Uh, and uh. If there are any clarification questions with respect to our own business cases, ask at that time and then run back to have any the the discussion.
But each one comes with a recommendation at the item before we move on to the next one. So how would we do that? Right? Like if somebody at the table doesn't want to move the recommendation of a plow truck. Or if somebody feels strongly about removing, I don't know, Water Street.
Well, I think if there if there is an action that that uh, committee would 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 want to take. Tonight, so so to speak, such as um, a removal of an item and a recommendation coming forward. Uh, if if the feeling is that. Um, there's support about the recommendation, but don't want to sort of finalize that as ironclad in in budget. It it can be as simple as remain in budget for it for for right now.
So. If we move a recommendation that's here, it says to to purchase the five ton truck. All that does is keeps it in the budget for now, but at some point we can still take it back out.
Uh, the 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 budget's not approved, correct?
And if we, right, Mr. Mayor, and if we. Take something out tonight, that means we don't want to go back in. We can do that. Si- say, for example, the ten and max of track twenty twenty four delivery for twenty twenty five. We could say, let's wait until twenty twenty five. And then scratch it out now. We don't have to go back. Kind of like, I I mean, they're not gonna. Kind of like to get some stuff off.
If there, if there is a, if there's a. A willingness amongst the table that there is no interest for that for for that particular item at this time, then. That decision can be made.
So the idea is that we go through. Each one here, the business case, we don't want, uh, then we just. We don't move the recommendation. Is that this is staff suggestion?
Uh, I I would suggest that it's. There isn't the 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 willingness to move that recommendation of the object off and I would make recommendation that's. That it's removed from that from the point.
So basically going through line by line.
You have a role, it will be a role part of the issue, you review the uh, the the business engagements, you you receive them and then have a. Review at the at the end of the meeting and provide some directives that.
Okay. Um. Okay, does anybody else want to weigh in?
Certainly.
I I do, and I might have just. Maybe it's my fault, got lost in in the wording of some of this. So when we talk about the four to four point two million dollars range. Are we talking basically the six point? Three, sorry, with that, six point three, six, five should be four million or should be four point four point four million? Be what becomes the four point two?
No, six point three, no, it should be four point four point two. That's the total capital of the budget.
Okay, yep, that's fair. I just just, uh, you know, one's a half in your picture than the other, obviously, so. Okay. Just depends on how you look at it. Uh, councilor Smellin? Uh, John?
Yeah, I just, uh. I think it's just a proposal that the former wanted to uh, well, if I think it just. We accept the check the proposal and here the business case. Reach one and then decide whether we. It's where we remain or not.
Yep. Okay, so then, so then that's it for now, and we'll be see it again on item one. Okay. So, yeah. Great, so then we are on to. Uh, eight A, which is the application to amend zoning by law twenty seven seventeen Gooden Road, which is. When you.
Uh, I probably supply a model to you in the. Um, so we've got an application for a building permit at twenty seven seventeen Gooden Road. And it proposes to rezone the land for residential second density. Residential first density with a special exception in order to know that this is made use of single, patchwork. And offer reduce block size of twenty three to three hectares. This is in our condition of severance fee thirty two twenty three. Um, so our corporate note type and background information is included in uh, the report here. Uh, so the applicants were completed by town staff uh, last year on December fifteenth and but in order to meet timelines that are required by the planning act. The running around has started with the public meeting for January twenty at six P M. Um, so this is a heads up and a recommendation that we can acknowledge and endorse the public meeting of strength.
Okay, so ultimately this is to let us know that a public meeting's been scheduled for the twenty ninth, which is fantastic. And and I mean, if there's any comments, I suppose we can hear them, but. We'll see it again after the twenty ninth, right?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll try to uh. May may the whole community develop on February and then with the council decision at the end of February, we can hear comments from the public uh, at the same.
Yeah, okay, so there is a recommendation uh, here. Did you read the recommendation? Yeah, sure.
I committee acknowledged and endorsed a public meeting scheduled for January twenty ninth, twenty four. Do you have comments on the public regarding the application for zoning by law limit at twenty seven seventeen Gooden Road?
Yes, everybody understands what what exactly that is. Any questions?
Uh, yes, uh, on 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 twenty seven seventeen Gooden Road. Uh, is there, after January twenty ninth, is there so many days that that twenty seven seventeen Gooden Road has to wait before he gets his building permit? After the public meeting?
Uh, before a building permit is issued, the severance will have to be finalized for the law that he wants to build on. So the zoning amendment uh, is one of the conditions of the severance that has to be clear.
Oh, so there's no, there's no waiting, no, like a a thirty day or sixty day after a public meeting? If he does his amendment. He can get his bill in print. I just.
But sorry.
This has gone on and on, this particular one.
Sure, we just received the application for a zoning amendment. Uh, in December, and it was, you complete application not long after that's meeting. We will schedule the public meeting um, pretty soon after afterwards. So the um. The plan requires twenty days notice for a public meeting, and we have to advertise that through the news table as well. So there's some. Um, they they need some notice as well. So the public meetings are trying out. Then we um, committee to make recommendation council and accompany after council decision, there's a twenty day appeal period. Where the applicant or um, a member of the public or an agency could file an appeal with the land company field tribunal. Um. And after that, field period is over, there's no appeals, the zoning amendment is fine. The zoning amendment is one condition of the severance that needs to be cleared of. He was still need to um, have a survey completed for the severance lands. And the development agreement, which he intended to have completed at the same time as the zoning amendment. Um, so there isn't any extra time there provided. Uh, I think those are all with the talented conditions on the severance. The counties or conservation committee may ask for other conditions, but I believe.
Okay, so there is a twenty day. Appeal. A window where someone can appeal after January twenty nine. Right?
Uh, change twenty nine to the public meeting date. So if there's maybe a little council decisions, so twenty days period after council's division.
Okay, I could, okay, okay, good.
And we won't see it till the end of February.
Yeah, yeah, no, we can do it that night, twenty ninth, no, no.
Uh, no, no, they will come back to committee for discussion and you guys can consider any comments that are remaining by the public. And then a recommendation to council, so on February twenty sixth will be um, the post office council meeting that was.
So we can't do it that night, the twenty nine.
Right?
We've got. Okay, after the, okay. Gee, so another one, okay.
It feels longer because we saw it.
For a severance.
For a severance, and there was an issue. About ownership or something in, no, but, right?
Beautiful. We had about the application for a a severance, and there were some comments. Um, we had a color that needed to be resolved, and the applicant did resolve those with um, through state political society, but that's.
Sure.
And that was resolved, and we brought it back to committee with that.
Right, and we didn't get a full application until the actual beginning of December.
Uh. For the zoning amendment.
The zoning amendment, yeah, right. So we're moving along in a timely fashion. It's just part of the process. Yeah, okay. It feels like it's longer. I hear what you're saying, Steve. Okay, um, so setting up the public meeting, it's already set, right, for the twenty ninth. It's already been advertised. It's just letting us know that it's the twenty ninth. Um, further questions or comments, anyone? Okay, and so, so there is a recommendation you need to move on a second for that, right? So moved by the council ward, second by councillor Smale. Further comments, hearing none, called question, in favor. Okay, um, are you speaking to B as well? For nine twenty one County Road two, okay?
Thank you for the chance. So fill our situation to the lap. I'm on page that we received is only another application. This one is at nine twenty one, I wrote to. Um, we didn't want there to be any unnecessary delays because of meeting schedules. We went ahead and scheduled a public meeting also for January twenty ninth at six P M. We continue these to the same meeting. Um, so this application proposes to allow uh, another permitted use on a property for a transpersonal establishment. This is for a potential new owner of the of the property. So. At this time, I'm just looking for committee, uh, I'll make a recommendation. Committee acknowledged and endorsed the public meeting scheduled for January twenty ninth, twenty four. See your comments from the public regarding the application for zoning by law limit for nine twenty one, I received.
Uh, one question to what you just said, a potential new owner or a potential new um. Please see.
Right?
Potential new owner or potential new lease or?
Um. My understanding was it was a potential new owner or the property, so I uh.
Okay, and just going back, what what I, what the only reason I ask is at the bottom of the personal letter that was submitted by Mr. Adal, the. Um, the last, the second last line is the current owner, the current owner would like to request that the current use uh, also be included.
Uh, so is it the applicant in this case is the potential owner for the property who is acting as an agent for the current owner?
The current owner wants it to stay as a possible usage. To keep the use that it has as well as. The new owner, potential new owner wants to increase.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, on that, i- is is this intentions like to make a showroom? The MJR or whatever?
Uh, just.
So and again, we're just scheduling a public meeting for the, or it's already scheduled for the twenty ninth. And then we'll see it again at CDC Jan or February fifth or sixth, right?
Yes. I mean, it's February fifth is the topic.
Yep. And that'll give us the ability to consider public comments and to have a big fulsome discussion with committee as well, right? Okay, all right, so co- are there further comments, questions, and or anything about regarding this? Before we. Everybody understands what we're doing, good. Okay, then um, uh, recommendation, did you read the recommendation, Wendy?
I did.
If you would. I just don't have it on my pager, I wouldn't.
But committee acknowledged and endorsed a public meeting scheduled for January twenty ninth, twenty four. Do you have comments from the public regarding the application for a zoning by law limit for nine twenty one County Road two?
Okay, moving. I moved by council smell, seconded by. Uh, council ward, further comments, requests? Call the vote on favor? Good. All right, application for severance ten, uh, twelve Scott Road, Randy North, or uh, Matt.
So, hi, okay, so we have a severance application for Scott Road. Um, this application proposes a new two hectare lot on the southwest corner of Villan with two hundred meters of friendly transport. For a house and a garage. The retaining lot would include the existing single dwelling in Grove on approximately twenty three hectares. Uh, the subdivision is within the rural policy area of the municipal plan. It's a rural, and we're going by the. Uh, the sound view of the application finds that it is consistent with the clarification plan and zoning matter policies. And uh, recommendation is that the committee recommend, but not to recommend in favor uh, severance application be one point four.
Uh, thank you, I just ask a a question. Um. The. Township drawing is part two. Uh, is on page forty five of one eighty nine. The. Who drew uh? The lines in on on page forty four?
That's from you.
That's from the applicant, right? Okay, so we we can't verify the actual accuracy of where that line. Of the influence area goes through there, although we. Have an idea that that's where it goes.
Correct. I found submission in private image while preparing the drawing that was submitted to the application. It's about halfway through the box, like hundred acres in, we've got two hundred acres.
Okay, there's still roughly two acres worth of land to the east that that's usable, correct? That's just just outside the influence area.
Yeah, outside the influence area of that and um, more than a hundred acres.
It's sort of got to come back and go this way, right?
Yeah, I'm going to go.
Yep, okay, all right, everybody understands, everybody's had a chance to read it. Um, I will. What is the recommendation for this one, too?
Uh, the recommendation is uh, that committee recommend that council recommend in favor of severance application be one point four point three.
Okay, so we will not see this one again. If we approve it tonight, right?
That council, council.
And it's all.
Yeah, council, okay. Wait, uh, discussion. Anyone on the way in? Right? Um. So. Refresh my memory, I guess it's gonna be, we have to go along. So what's gonna control not being able to build on the, let's say, the. Western half of the of the of the severed land? That's, is that building permit or is that gonna be? In the in the severance here.
Sure, it's the building by also required five hundred years of that from the uh, for residential uses from any land. So this will go in that field. So. Uh, where if you don't normally open up the initial plan for a building for an application, you do open up a facility by law and that is checked. Okay, they would be.
We'll load it into here, and then when they do the building pyramid itself, then they'll know that they gotta have it.
Next, that's good, that's all I have on that one.
Come down this way?
I I just have one, if if, when we do this severance application, can he come back and amend that? This property in the two?
Uh, amend this same application?
Uh, amend this, yeah, you got the five acres, could he come back and say, hey, I want. Maybe divide it in half at two point five acres?
Before this is approved?
No, after.
And he can make a new severance.
He he can make a new se- a new. Come back to us with a new severance?
Yes, you have to, you have to. Go through the pre-consultation stage again, and we we will have another severance application.
Okay, but he can do it, or they can do it.
You can make an application.
Yeah, okay.
That's.
But through the, through the chair, but I think about two acres of that is land that. You can't build on anyways, so it may not be the same, you know, either might be a reason he's picked this, 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 uh, they they picked this dimension perfectly as well, as we say to that, so.
It's too bad, it's a nice law.
Yeah.
Like.
Okay, um. Huh, yeah. I forgot to write it down, I do, I did have one quick question, I. I forgot what it is, so I guess it's. But if I remember, I'll ask it to council. Uh, okay, so recommendation is committee recommend, the council recommend in favor of severance application be one forty four dash three. Uh, mover? So, uh, deputy mayor, second by council ward, further discussion? All right, none of the other question, all the favor. Good, all right, easement for easement agreement IFO for twenty ninety nine Dundas Street, uh. How do you say that?
Espec.
Espec, okay, Especa Holdings Incorporated.
Okay, so, um, we've got an agreement with right away with country property at twenty ninety three, twenty nine five Dundas Street, private business, that is downtown for. At twenty ninety nine Dundas Street, that's Especa Holdings. Uh, the community of whole community development reviewed the owner's request at their October meeting, and his letter is included in this agenda package as well. So an agreement has been prepared by our owner for our community in council review. The owner has not coordinated the preparation of the survey through Ryan Engineering. Uh, just note that a survey will need to be registered at the Land Management Office before the agreement is finalized. We anticipate that will be done before uh, the council meeting. So, uh. The the draft agreement from earlier is included in the agenda package, subject to combination of the back committee recommend. By council entering to easement agreement process unfolding at the patch, on reference to the plan of the positive.
Good, thank you. Um, okay, discussion. Anyone want to start?
Pretty well, yeah, that's all. Easy one.
Um. Did you want us, he said he wanted to move, but.
Oh, okay, that's right, um. I I I look at this, I mean, I know, you know, I know why, I know what we're doing here. Um, but once we do this, this is. For, let's call it forever, if you will. Um, if another business wants to buy that property down the road, uh, our property.
Um if another business wants to buy that property down the road, our our property, this uh this stays with the property through that transfer as well of ownership, I'm assuming?
Uh correct, it's it was registered on a title for both properties, and so um it would still be owned by owner of twenty ninety three and five Dundas Street, but the owner of twenty ninety nine Dundas Street.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, because I only think it just it limits the possibilities a little bit of that property, but um I know we've had this conversation a little bit as well, but uh you know, but with that term, and I know we didn't, we they didn't want to term, I get that, um, I don't know, I just you know, I I I struggled a little bit with it because it does limit that property, you can do with that better property, but um you know, uh I guess at the very least, they could be a shared loading dock area, there's no parking plan for this, right? They're allowed to park in that in that easement?
Uh the easement property, I believe they, it's not very intense for a uh like a building.
Uh further comments?
I have to agree with Councilor Ward, you limited when you own your property, you ever decide to sell it? You know, they want a place to commit on, I mean. That's uh you ever get a developer that wants to build that, which in my opinion, it's an ideal place for uh for housing, and sometimes they put their, well, it's kind of a one night only housing, there, that's an ideal spot, except for grants and shop available. The township is wanting to end, and this gonna limit your ability there, I don't know how many feet of easement is that in reason, sketch.
It's about, it's about five meters.
Fifteen feet.
Yeah, actually, one of the beyond.
I think it's about twenty percent of the property when I look at it, that's the problem I have. Uh Councilor, are you finished on?
I don't know what you mean. It's a chop and dark, early seller. The person I would wouldn't give them a exclusion, I'd give them a temporary right right away, and as long as property wasn't sold yet, and right way to use it for now, and nobody using it, I wouldn't give them a give a lifetime leash on, and then based on the property, it goes, it goes with that property too, so.
Mm-hmm. That was my answer, too.
What an easement, is it not? Anyone can use an easement? So now that it's being sold, it's?
Uh no, the rights, we just went to the owner of two zero nine and Dundas Street, the the owner of the property that it's attached to, um would still own that land, but twenty ninety nine Dundas Street, it's not uh any of the public, so it would be it's right now established land, but it's like the twenty ninety nine Dundas Street with the rights to use that. Somebody else could purchase property unless I'm in the building. Would be taking their ability to use it away from.
But they can't build in Missouri, but there's the, there's the right of way, right? So, you know, we're considering the size of the of the footprint for sure.
October, whatever values the township property, you can tell players, uh he says it's there, they can't use it, use it, but they're still paying taxes on it.
That's a good point as well. Does that?
No, I don't think it, I mean, I I don't.
It's good for the business, but then again, if you want to sell the property down the road, it's yeah.
But. I can do that.
Is there a reason we went with an easement?
Um we just saw our uh parcel, we created an undersized lot on Dundas Street. Um when I look at the parcel, so I keep legal map in there. It seems like that the way has already been for some time, it's used for that commercial building at the.
So ultimately, though, if we give it, because I mean, it says no instructions in perpetuity. If we do that, we're creating an undersized lot, I mean. They can't use that part of the land, are they gonna be able to, if somebody bought that lot, would they be able to build right to the edge of the driveway?
Uh.
To the edge of the easement?
There are too many setbacks from these.
So there are no setbacks, so they can still, would that easement count as part of their open space or lots, lot, you know, building law requirement?
Yes, like so if they had a certain amount of lot coverage, that they could.
Yeah.
As as part of lots, they can not, not build all that, or the whole is considered. We need one of the lot.
So wouldn't limit. So they're losing eighteen feet, but they could build right up to the edge of where that driveway will be.
Yeah.
Would be, but the, I wonder about the picture, if they build a house or anything, buildings. Can they have access, like if they put a garage at the back of the building, if the front of the building is facing Green Street? And come off of that easement into the garage?
Well, it's not a residential property, it's a.
No, no, but I'm saying it's another business. Like they're using it, they want to use it for bowling and stuff, right? So can another business use that same thing if they have it?
I would say no, we use it.
Because the lot actually retains a piece in behind it as well, right? Like the the two thirty six, the lot actually goes in behind two thirty five, the whole stretch too, right? Am I right in reading it that way?
Doesn't tell us.
So I think it's page fifty eight, fifty six.
That's facing behind the building.
Mm-hmm.
So uh on the same parcel of the building, there is really a way to access that space behind it, unless there's a back porch of the building there, or maybe that little strip of land to the east.
And on that little strip, so part one is where we're we're granting an easement, correct? Okay, and then so directly at the bottom of that, where it says lot two thirty six. It also says subject to easement per instrument number, so is that part of that already eased as well?
Uh that is not on on the, not on either of the lots, but looking at, well, we're looking.
Oh, that's not part of the lots?
No, the lot line is um the line over it says lot two thirty six. You look at page forty nine?
Mm-hmm. Forty.
Or the like the lot street across, I think um on Bridge Street, so two twenty five Bridge Street is where we're looking at, where it says lot two thirty six, so this looks like there's an easement, and it's underneath into this.
I think what's confusing me is the, is where the line that that comes sort of at the end of the proposed driveway, that continues, I guess it would be to the south. Uh that says fence, fence to line? Lot thirty six points to that fence. Does that not indicate that that's still part of lot thirty six then?
Lot two thirty six?
Lot two thirty six, sorry.
That's putting to the lot one for the lot outside. The rest of the.
So, so if I'm right, two thirty, two, is two thirty six an L then? With a separate easement on it? Like right now, it's one block. Or at least it appears to be one block. Is it going to create a new lot that's an L?
Uh okay, not creating a lot, so part one is um.
Right, it all stays the same, it's an easement.
Yeah, part part one is, it's just like a, it's a line, it's kind of a crooked line. But anyway, behind the building, it's still a part of the the two zero nine nine Dundas Street.
Yeah, behind, behind two thirty five. Two thirty six, how far does two thirty six continue? That that's more my question.
I think these, like lot two thirty six and two thirty five on this um on the survey plan are related to looking for, I don't want to speak too much outside of my expertise, but it's not uh it's not part one or part two on that on the survey plan. But they do require additional on the survey, if they're in the deposit, then.
This, well, it looks like lot two thirty five, two thirty six, if you will, sorry, two thirty six is it doesn't go past there, right? It just goes to the corner of bottom of forty nine, Dundas, and then Dan, and then those sort of, yes, you said things from there. So that line looks like it carries, except for this little adjustment for the back of the building, two thirty nine Dundas, or sorry, two thirty nine Bridge Street.
Two thirty six lot, is that not the driveway for the?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, the other easement is, right?
Is it an easement provision?
I think it's a subjective easement. Yeah, can we reset? Six, right? Right, so that's already.
So like, like registered plan number five, that would have been survey number twenty five, would have been to been good, or like a hundred years ago, like it's an old, old survey plan, and there'd be lots on that survey clip that are still shown on the survey that I am engineering has done for us today, so we could have a few um properties, a few lots within what would have been lot two thirty six or lot two thirty five way back when surveys were in practice.
So pin. So then are we looking at a pin? Like I'm just still trying to figure out where the lot lines are.
Is it helpful to look at the other um drawing written about the J S with the satellite in it, three, I think forty nine?
Well, I would, I mean, I would suspect that a survey should be more accurate than than that, but like I survey doesn't look like that.
This is what we're served, right, this is the, it's right, it were given them?
No.
This is Jay, no?
No, it's full thing, pardon, it's from pin to pin. That's where it is, that's where it is now, that's the ground and driver.
Right.
Where you're giving is from there, five point two seven, just all the way back.
Oh, yeah, so it is.
Uh it's perfect.
Yeah, yeah.
So it looks. So, so you're saying that the the survey isn't accurate?
Only the survey is.
Is in the saddle out picture? The width of two nine three, two nine five is actually obviously wider than two nine nine. And in the survey, it's not, it has that little less, I know that. Appreciate that. When you that it's got, it's not showing. You know. Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, but mid, yeah, yeah, oh, you're saying that it's wider? Oh, I see, we're just thinking right here, yeah, we have to go by the number. Okay. Very good, no, good one, I did notice that.
So like for the easement, we go uh in the uh the rural policies.
Yeah. They've already got it marked out, I drove, I drove a bit a little, a little walk through today. I I'm certainly concerned about the future use of that, of that corner. Um and the and the size of the lot uh that's there, and I'm concerned with with the wording in perpetuity. I just hate to see us have to turn, we've got a perfectly good lot there that, you know, we made it clear that we, you know, still wanted to retain that for future development at some point, and this seems to put a lot of development restrictions on it, and especially if we just sure that we said that it would I know it retains ownership of it, but it's still, in theory, creates an undersized lot. You don't have to own lot twenty one oh three, do we? Go back to the east again? We do all that one? Say again, I thought, that's called, I don't know, that's what that's asking. We, did you say we do? Why wouldn't we go down? There's there's things they want.
I think yeah, yeah, they're not means, probably only about uh six feet from the building.
So so that triangle twenty one oh three is ours, is is the township of those? Yeah, so so why, why are you saying we can't give him uh on the other side then? Because of the rail? We can't get in?
Well, what I what I would say is pin number sixty one five two, actually number three, number one. Green on rail and right of way. Which went straight up to the building.
Excuse me, I didn't understand that, uh. Day, could you?
You, which page are you on it?
The fifty six, ninety nine.
Fifty six, so not me, oh, okay, um. So a lot of forty nine, so fifty six.
Go back to that, back to that one again.
Yeah.
Well, I was just, I was just trying to explain through pin number.
Okay, fifty six, okay.
So sixty eight, one fifty two, is that what you're talking about? Zero three four.
So if you're actually go here on the gradients, I mean, the uh, but everybody see ten, sixty, one, five, two, dash, zero, three, four.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So that would be ingredient, real track, right?
It'd be what?
Be ingredients right of line, the rail track. That area where you see part five three four, once the one line to the next one. See that?
Uh yeah.
Two, three, four. Oh, that's the same pin number too.
But I didn't, I didn't give it, then 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 it's the road. Yes. So I'm saying, part, right there, so part of the thought, is ingredients. Round back. That is, you got a triangle, which is the same.
It's not, it's not the distance between where part five is, where it touches those two lines?
That would be, that 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 would be there, something there at right of way.
Could be ingredients right of, right of way?
Well, the same right of way goes right through the middle of twenty one oh seven and twenty, or and twenty one eleven, right? Am I wrong in thinking that?
Oh.
That goes right through the middle of the building, doesn't it?
Yeah, the property lines on the on the P I S, you know, with this alley image, there, there are some towns. A lot of this is there. I think it's a bit, you know, a lot of it, but sometimes it's.
Okay. I think I'm gonna need you to.
So it 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 appears from the preliminary discussion that there was support with respect to um. The easement approach. Uh, we 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 move forward that way, but it appears of on return, there is some hesitation. It happens to with entering into to an easement agreement that would provide that portion of that easement basically.
I think, I think that that's fair statement. Yeah.
Up through the third, uh, scenario, that property east of the building. Where the road tracks are.
Yeah.
There is enough room at the front to back track to trailer to wherever he is, if we had easement on that side. Correct. Because I mean, we used to put snow back in through during the gravel over, the dump truck and everything back up. They're going bumping over the river tracks. And if we own that property. Which we're gonna go that, that that I know, we can put these on that side of the building. That's it, it's sort of sad.
Yes, we're never.
So we're not. That's what it's all about.
Yeah. There's not a lot of support.
Right.
There's, I I don't get the sense that there's a lot of support for her, for this. I I I just don't like the inter- inter- but you.
Then maybe they suggest instead of uh the recommended recommendation as presented, then if there if if there's not the interest that the committee. You know, direct staff, they um look at the easement on the um.
How about, how about potential other options?
Potential other options.
Because if this is the only one, then. It just appears that there might be questions about if there's other options, or I've heard the words in perpetuity or or issues for folks to. Nobody said it, nobody said flat out, no, but they're concerned about develop or ability to develop that law.
Yeah, so what 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 I would say is that certainly looking to have a door on the uh.
Yeah.
West side, so that you back in, that even part. That you to the automobile as well.
It's only eighteen.
You're now also looking at doing some of the progress to the property exterior, who's being back doing. Um, so I. I think something happening, maybe with the suggestions to.
But my question to that would be, how are you gonna back into that when it's only eighteen feet wide for the transporter or the truck? Because because that new portion that we're giving is a laneway, the building covers the rest of the property, how are they gonna? They can't back in flat against the back of the building, so you're just saying back up and then they load in the side?
Right here.
I I I, you know.
Okay, all right.
I would probably be guessing that they would have.
Load into the side versus that, okay.
Exactly. I think we should pick that one.
Okay, I need some help, this is taking me too long, so.
So uh I would, I would, I I would say that committee um. Right, and then cancel the next staff to explore.
Other options, other options, or any options. Okay, so recommendation, uh, can somebody, I need somebody to move the recommendation then to. You know, this obviously isn't gonna pass, I don't want necessarily to fail. Um, defer, the recommendation to defer, or is it, I think, um. I think that's always a potential to come back with other options if we defer, but um. Uh, how about we be more clear in our direction? If possible, but I need somebody to move that, so our recommendation, it's to defer, we're sorry.
The chair of our day, if you may, go just to defer, since you're referring this exact report, looking for a future.
Yeah, I already, I've already mentioned that, yeah, thank you. So we're gonna confirm motion then to. I need some help, yes.
So we're gonna defer this recommendation, so?
No. Well, we might have somebody, if somebody does it, but it'll come back exactly as it's written if it's deferred. Which I don't think is what we want, so, and that recommendation is not on board, so if you wanna move another recommendation. Giving direction to staff to explore other options, then somebody needs to actually move that recommendation, otherwise I'm gonna read the recommendation as for mover and setter. Going.
You're filling, no, I'm trying to figure out the word in writing for it, so, because here, we don't wanna go back with this, I don't believe, hey, I don't believe. Are you working on something? Yeah. Maybe. It's a committee.
That committee recommended.
Right, so. Good direct staff.
We want.
Other options.
Other options with respect.
So that's an easy one. Listen to me.
Can somebody move it?
Sure.
Move. So I can. Sure. So you moved?
Move this?
No, the one that Dave just said, yeah, the one that.
Okay.
You second, okay. We're looking like a gong trigger. All right. So we're asking for more direction and or asking for more information or more options, and then we we will deal with it when it comes back, or all in favor of that recommendation. Thank you. Cool, so, all right, um, on to item E. And see her to treasure or CEO? Better. So.
Uh, just a quick update on our grant funding through the. Community program. Um, we have uh secured one million five hundred forty seven thousand five hundred and nine dollars and fifty seven cents. Due to twenty one I C three street funding. Uh, federal contribution was eight hundred and forty four thousand one hundred and twelve cents, and the provincial contribution was seven hundred and three thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars and seven. Uh, township submitted a final claim on the summer eighteen twenty three, as the project is close to substantial completion, and not specified to date the qualify for the funding. Uh, hundred percent of the funding received will be spent on this product. Uh, securely, we've received one hundred and two hundred and forty seven thousand seven hundred and sixty eight dollars in income tax. Uh, we received an extra payment over the holiday break, which was nice to see, so the remainder of two hundred and ninety nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and seven and three cents. This thing, you know, counts receivable and will be released uh when our claims are.
Okay, so pretty, pretty simple, just an information item.
Information.
Not, not really anything to discuss on it, it's just fulfilling the one point five uh very soon, right? We can expect it to be done very soon. Okay, good, any questions of the treasurer in regard to you? Hearing none, then move on to the G I C renewal for January twenty twenty four.
Okay, uh, so purpose of this is direct staff using all the proceeds. Uh, so back in July twenty twenty three, the treasurer's directed deposit of one million seven hundred eighty thousand two hundred and seventy three dollars and fifty five cents. We threw a hundred eighty day non-rentable G I C with all that Canada. Uh, G I C matures on January twenty fourth for a value of one million eight hundred and thirty five thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, left will be transferred back to the township operating account at eight, and must be allocated back to the original account, which is the industrial parkland reserve fund. And which is ninety eight dots three to one three, uh, can also reinvest, uh, the G I C and proceeds are not needed in twenty twenty four. Uh, so given by considerations, um, that these are the rates that the port was, because their uh. G I C renewal was just before ours, so these are the same rates that the port. Uh, was able to get, I'm not sure what they will be on December, or what they will be on January uh twenty. January twenty fourth, when it becomes due, um, but um. I know there was talk before at uh council and committee about the industrial parkland reserve fund. And having some more liquid funds available, so the recommendation is to reinvest one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At the best available interest rate for a one year non-redeemable G I C, and then um. Recommendation two is to direct the treasurer to transfer the remaining proceeds of five hundred and eighty five thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars and fourteen cents. To be received on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four for the industrial parkland reserve fund. Ninety eight dash three one three.
Okay, so just wanna make sure that I have this clear. The total amount in. In parkland, industrial parkland. G I C, non-G I C, everything is the two point six, right?
Correct.
And we're being asked to put one point two five of that. Into a twelve year non-re, or twelve, hopefully not twelve year, twelve month, non-redeemable.
Right.
Okay, so that leaves us one, one point four and change to to purchase if something comes along.
Correct.
But we won't have access to that one point two.
Not for you.
Not for you. Okay, all right, now that we said that, uh, discussion.
Your investment will last twenty days, twenty years, because all. Financial top is that interest is gonna drop by mid next year or some, law, mortgage rates are all starting to down some. On rates are gonna drop through this thing.
What, you said you're fine with it?
No, I'm, yes.
You're fine, yeah.
Thanks.
I I'd like to personally put it in all into the uh. Industrial Parkland Fund and then have a proper discussion about what we think the next twelve months look like as far as what we plan to do with any of that money, for instance, before we commit, from my perspective. I just, I just don't know, we just, you know, there's. Balls in here, yeah, there's balls in here. Okay, I mean.
No, I can, we still got a balance of one point two five if we have to come along, and if something big comes along and we need to borrow, we can borrow. It's not. To me, if we're gonna make. Well, we don't know. What are you predicting, uh? Mister Treasurer?
Well.
No, I mean, January twenty fourth, here it is, January or not, what do you predict?
Uh, through the, through the chair, with that mayor, um, I don't think uh we would get the same amount of five, but uh we might get something. Something close to that, and uh for transparency sake, my original recommendation on this was to do actually what. Councilor and suggested was to just let the G I C lapse. And then have a discussion on what to do with the funds, and then make that decision later, but when the rates came back from the port and they were still high. Uh, thought there was an opportunity to at least lock some way for a good interest rate before stuff starts to fall.
Right.
Because our, our, just in our uh consolidated reserve fund, we get five point four five percent of that money. So still good interest rates on that, uh, however, as crime starts to fall, that rate will start to shrink.
We got. You know?
Yeah, I, because I I'm sure we can get probably six.
That would, that would be up to Scotia and.
No, I, I know. Karen, I mean.
No, I mean, it makes sense to me to to put it in the G I C freely.
Yeah. And. And if we did come into a situation where where we wanted to purchase something that was, that was more. We could, we could borrow, and the interest that we would, that we would gain or or pay would offset each other for that, for that period of time.
I I would assume if we were the uh through the chair, and I would assume if if there was a significant land purchase. Or just, there would be some sort of bridge finance, and it could be. The G I C is.
Okay, it it, well, it does, I mean, I don't know what the, you know, if if the, if the uh rate that they'll pay us is say six percent. I'm assuming the financing rate would be more than six percent, obviously, right, so. You know. I think anyways, um, and I also, I mean, you know, is there a possibility that we have money we could um. Temporarily reallocate within our own resources, and without you do that, or we'd actually have to go and get this money if it was, for that.
Uh, similar to uh through the charity council award, similar to what was done. At the last uh last meeting where we did a temporary borrowing.
Right.
Uh, essentially, if we wanted to be able to keep funds in that reserve, that's what was happened. Through the table for for discussion.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, too, is if uh we borrowed money, if we had borrowed money, by the time that all the paperwork and everything is done, our twelve months is up, and we got our money back. Because it takes forever to get anything settled or finished.
Potential.
Thank you, but it's just time, 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 and I follow this is up, so we make some, it's fine, but.
Yeah. So you want back in?
Well, I do. Counselor Smale, Ted. Any land purchase intention that we've ever made, since you were on there, by the time we, council started talking, had negotiated the entire check, so you got your year up. Maybe a month.
May, maybe, but yeah.
Fail for a few days.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, fair enough, as long as it doesn't limit, I think as long as it doesn't limit our possibilities, but we're, we're comfortable with, we're, yeah, all right, you are, I would say so. Okay, so, so, um. Put your glasses on so you can read. Um, the recommendation reads then that committee recommend that council one direct the treasurer to purchase a one year non-redeemable G I C in the amount of one point two five million. At the best available rate, and two direct treasure to transfer remaining proceeds, five hundred eighty five thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars and fourteen cents to be received on January twenty fourth. Twenty twenty four to the industrial parkland reserve fund, uh, ninety eight dash three eight one three, and you move it. Moved by councillor Smale and a seconder.
Sure.
Uh, seconded by deputy mayor Dillabot, is there further discussion to the item? Well, it's gone, it's gone, uh, then I will call the question all in favor. Good, one, two. Uh, we're early.
Yeah, annual.
Report. Sorry?
Accelerate a little bit.
Okay.
Um, okay, item, uh, item G, so recommendation is that committee recommends that council receive twenty twenty three annual water reports with the current water system and distribution system. And direct staff to post the annual water reports to the township website. And three, direct staff to look on users by social media and newspaper of report availability. That is the recommendation, basically, this is an annual requirement under Ontario regulation now, one seventy oh oh three, that this needs to be done by February twenty eighth. So, the reports are there, we see the reports and.
Uh, thank you for that, CEO, um, all right, then are there, the CEOs read the recommendation, are there questions or comments in regard to the reports? That's good. Okay, so then I need a mover to receive the reports, and direct staff and direct staff. Moved by uh councillor Work, seconded by councillor Smale, further discussion on that, I. Hearing and seeing none, a poll of question, and all in favor. Okay, good, okay, so, uh, do you wanna try to speed the next one along as well?
I will, I will, here, uh, it gave, uh, age, so, uh, request to bring forward a report on the agreed on. Parking lot expansion, the capital project twenty-three, uh, it is, uh, it is in front of you, uh, for, for information. I would just ask that, uh, let's receive, and if there's any, uh, petition, we'll, uh, follow up, or if you can touch these with, uh, with myself.
The report speaks, thank you, C E O, I think the report speaks very clearly as to, uh, as to. The start to finish and, and anything in between, so, um. Receiving that report. We're good to move on. Okay, then let's get into our capital business case then, so we are. On to the twenty twenty-four draft fire department budget, and the first item on that. Is fire station number two. And seeing the chief is with us, am I to assume the chief's going to speak to her?
I just wanted to get to the year.
All right. Let the fun begin. Chief, send your hands.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this, this case for, uh, study of consulting fees for the fire station in Carla. Including site remediation and geog- geotechnical study, design, development of construction documents, and tender preparation. Uh, the project has been ongoing for several years, and the station really was appointed, including a representative council. Uh, the goal is to issue a tender for construction to facilitate a start in the spring of twenty twenty-five. Uh, the phase of the project will be run by a combination of reserve funds and.
That's all, that's, that's it for the report?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there a recommendation with it, chief? Recommendation. So committee rec- so the recommendation is that committee recommends that council accept option one, and direct staff can move forward with site remediation, geotechnical study. And issue an R S P for consulting services for the design and the project administration of fire station two. Okay, who wants to start? Because I always got. Um, do I look left and right? Yeah, okay, so, uh, the overall plan is to tear down the existing fire hall and build a new, or right on the same site? Or is it not to the side and then tear down after?
Through the chair, the, the site we've been looking at for, uh, for several years now is the, uh, where the previous, uh. Aminas stood, so just sell it to the fire, assisting the fire station official.
Uh, okay, and then, um. Uh, regardless of what we decide, you, you did mention it here, um. Uh, existing space available for much needed storage space for public works and wreck. Would I, I'm looking at a shared, shared building as well for this one, like we do have today, or is this? Um, is that the plan, is that it was a shared building, and I guess that's question one. And then two would be, uh, you mentioned clean community space in there, and I do think there's an opportunity for us to. Uh, take advantage of it for doing a new build to make sure we incorporate something that, you know, there's lots of needs out there, you know. But first of mind comes to, uh, space we can rent out for, 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 um. Uh, much needed childcare spaces and things like that, so I don't know if that's considered in the plan, but I think it would be something I would love to see there to be on this.
Yep, um, sure. Any chance, uh, through the marriage of the fire chief, how, how old is the two sections that you added on to that building?
Through the chair, the south edition, obviously, was right around, uh, when we toured the courses in two thousand. Uh, the north edition was before my project, but before, uh, ninety-four. Not sure whether that.
I was reading, uh, everything here about it, and I was just thinking like, half of it's pretty much not out of date. Uh, would it not be cheaper to add on to the north side for all the stuff that you have put in the report that, uh. For storage and proper gear, showers and all. Would not be cheaper than building a branded building? For this one, this one to that.
Through the chair, uh, through the, uh, the study that was done by Eastern Engineering, uh, at that time, they stated that.
I have a question, feel divided. A new building might be going to cost, cost a lot. A lot of money once the first design come up. And, uh, who, who is to see in a, um, substation fire, all built there, but I don't think we need a. The first design coke for all the offices that went back up and. Bring a, a larger copy of a station larger, wanting, and I don't really think. Size of the township, we need two major fire stations, I think. You need just maybe a new building down there that accommodates the fire engines and, and showers and. And such, but I don't think I need a whole bunch of offices, we need. That's up to council decision on much money to spend on. Average fire station right now, from what I hear, um, base at their, their zone, they fancy one of the Prescott and Augusta, and they go there. Six to seven million dollars, so. I don't know, whether you need a, a showcase, go in desperate financials.
I just, uh. I have a, a problem, chief, we have seventy thousand design and development. Question, I guess not problem, but a question, but didn't we have the design four years ago, I have some plans at, at home. Of the new fire department. That we're supposed to be looking at on the property we're talking about, so why do we have to? Have seventy grand in design development?
Through the chair, the, uh, the, the documents, I think they're referred to over the concept drawings. So vehicles are basically, uh, simple building layers, with a kind of a magnetic.
So, and the site recommendation and geological study, we did a whole bunch of studies on. Environmental assessment, another twenty-two grand, is that right?
Correct, so the site remediation, or through the chair, the site remediation would be to deal with the, uh, contaminant that we did final. Lot to deal with that, so, uh, if we deal with that before we commit, at least we'll put the normal number, and then we'll be taking care of it, we'll get some private doctors. And the deal factor was that we would like.
So you said that, the, the one I have at home is a concept design, so. So we've got another seventy thousand for the concept, same concept? We're gonna. Like we have a concept design at seventy thousand, we've got a design development at seventy thousand, that's a hundred and forty thousand. So we're gonna do the same thing that we did three years ago?
Through the chair.
On the concept design?
The concept designs were, were ideas, uh, for council to consider when we were looking at the option of renovation. Of the existing fire hall versus building a new fire hall. Uh, they're, they're simply, uh, building layouts.
So we can't use that that we had three years ago, the concept design? That's what you're saying?
Through the chair, we, we could start with that as a baseline, if, if you get anything.
Would we, uh, duty chair, man, could I ask a question? Could we maybe look at Augusta? Or, uh, Elizabeth Kitley's new fire hall and see if they wouldn't give us. This concept design, the development, design, the documents? Or would that be? Maybe, or do you guys have different? Like, to me, every hall we go into, pretty much the same, every new hall, pretty much laid out the same. Uh, North Gremble, Augusta, I mean, it's tinkered, but. I'm just saying, if you think we could look at, that's what we call collaboration. Of going to another township and looking for that, or if they would give us. That at maybe ten thousand dollars instead of a hundred and forty thousand.
Through the chair, I, I think there may be some, some opportunities to, uh, to do something like that, uh, through our new project. Or, um. The building design is, is the only one in the year, so, uh, or perhaps, so using anybody's, uh, design. Even still have to work through the engineer as well. That's not just example, taking into the drawing and running, but, uh, I think there might be an opportunity for, uh, to start with, in existing and move forward.
Further, are you good? Sorry, further, are you good? Um, well, I'd like to hear. If anybody else, and, uh, then I'll come back for the final, if we wish.
What happens to the old buildings? Like, does it get torn down, does it get sold, does it? If it's sold, are there funds that can be put back into the new building, like, is that? Good question.
Through the chair, I, I believe there is, is much needed storage space for, for other departments. Uh, we are always sharing some space with piles and generators and tamponies. But I believe that, that, uh, existing space, or at least a portion of that existing space, will be, will be well used by, uh. The balance of the minutes.
No problem. Yeah, I, I, I would say that, um, I would not look at, uh, at the biology that. I, I would look at the purpose in some way, shape. Some, some additional storage, uh, capacity, but she can also look at. Potential. Other options, I know, that late twenty-three, I think there was two weeks where, where, where summer, we can. Uh, evidence that, that a fire station do, so maybe that's a better location. Or for the entire program, with, you know, in a future day with that, to have a back building. That would at least be, you know, on fun, that initial plants, it would be good for, for, for some additional equipment support. As a start, for some, for some of the area.
Okay. Okay, uh, and I guess I probably should weigh in on this as well, right? So, uh, as chair, I guess I normally wouldn't speak, but, um, through the budget items, I could plan to, so. Um, to fire station two, I prefer, uh, option number two, I'll be straight, straightforward, we have a long list. Of, uh, items, we need to get that list down to four million to four point two million. Um, I believe, uh, through the years that I've been involved in council, we've supported fire with. Um, trucks with equipment, and, uh, last year, we, I think doubled on our area, uh, value, so. Um, I think that the council over the last five years that I've been involved has shown great support for our fire department in terms of. Uh, vehicles, uh, supporting our firemen and with, uh, uh, great gear and. And every, and, and the needs that are there, and I struggle to think that, um. There are so many, um, needs in our township, that, uh, if this building is. Is functional and it is existing and we can make it work for another year, another two years, another three years. Um, I think that's, that's ultimately my choice, there are other, um. Not my choice, that would be my vote, it's not my choice, um, there are many other items though that I, that I would like to see move forward. Um. Having said that, I do, I would like to hear what other departments I've asked for it many times and. Um, the last three or four years, when we, this item seems, I think it's come up every year that I've, uh, been on council. And, and I think the same ask on my, on my behalf is, are we working with any of our neighbors? It's interesting that you mentioned that. Um, and the designs that are already out there, or do we have to have our own, that fire station? And I certainly, um, agree with, um. Mister Hunter, in the terms of what, what, if, if we ever get there, what exactly do we, do we need versus what do we want? And, and I'm not sure that I understand exactly what we need versus, uh, what we would, what we would want in a fire station, so. Um, but I'm only one, I'm only one person up here, but I, I want to be clear where I, where I stand on that. So I think we support, uh, the department very well in terms of equipment, and, and certainly in the finances last year. Um, and, and that'll be the case moving forward, but I, I just think as long as the building works, I think we need to continue to make it work. I don't know if anybody wants to click around two on it, but. Well, uh, I do, I mean, I, I, and, and I, you know, I would tend to agree that this, this may not be the year for this, but, uh. Uh, to your point, uh, Mister Hunter brought up a, a good shit concept there, I mean, you know. I think the first starting point on what would you do, and I, and I have not seen any of the drawings, so I don't, I, I'm speaking a little bit without that knowledge. But, um, you know, if, you know, if, if, if there's a scale, I don't wanna say a scaled down version. What's, what's the required versus you use your center, well, what's the need versus the want aspect of, of the station itself? Uh, I think that should be reviewed over, over the twenty-four years, to be honest, so. Sit that in one again?
I just think, council needs to decide among yourself, as you said, what do you actually need in that location, nurses? Now, what?
That's it? You want to go again, you said?
Yeah, I do, uh, duly chaired to the chief, it says option two deferred design development technical construction. Then you have the risk, health and safety, what's the health and safety involved in that? I can. Kind of, I, I assess ability I can see, it's an issue for bathrooms and so on, but. What's our health and safety, are we putting our, our priorities at, at, at risk here?
Through the chair, over the last, uh. Probably twenty years, uh, there've been a lot of studies to do with, uh, products, products of combustion. Uh, contamination, bunker gear. Uh, and if you, if you kind of chance to go through, and if the new fire station, there's a line, basically to keep. The dirty stuff dirty and the clean stuff clean, so when, when you, when you respond to a call, you would enter a room where all the bunker gear is stored. And you would go to the trucks, and then when you return from a call, you, you would photograph it to that room and take your gear off and have an opportunity to shower, but it'll clean both. Uh. That way, all of the. Potential hazard, this, this kind of stays in one area when the rest of the fire hall is considered clean. Um, there's very lax, really lacking in that area, uh, station two. Obviously, the acceptability issues are, are minor, but considering they're, they're there, there are several different elevations.
Uh, duty chair to the chief, now do we have this in, uh, Spencible? Where they can have their bunker gear and they wash and they shower, every time you come back, everybody jumps in the shower? And you have your bunker beer here in the one area that gets cleaned and dried?
Through the chair, we're, we're, we're partway in there, where we do have, uh, kind of a dedicated little dirty, dirty side and clean side.
Right.
But, uh, it, it isn't, uh. Isn't designed, uh, to allow an efficient flow of, uh.
This, the duty trip, yeah, the Spensable one chief isn't. Capable of doing that now, and that's only what, ten year old, fifteen years old?
Through the chair, it's not designed to wait, to wait stations there.
Okay, is it possible, chief, that we could design this Ron Smith, one to have a dirty area? And showers, and so everybody drops, or, you know, their bunker, which I can understand, and, and takes a shower? Is that possible or not?
Through the chair, I I think it's possible that some economic money will throw. Right, because the problem with the renovations, you don't know the cost until you start the renovate.
Right.
And they take out of the biggest.
You wanna go?
Well. I would like to guess.
That's that's yeah, it's fine, yeah, go ahead.
Uh. When you make a suggestion that uh has has a has a certain point of direction being that uh. The stove is reduced with respect to uh the the Ash for twenty twenty four and direct us to go back and and take a lot of culture. Look, I I would not wanna see um. The, you know, geotechnical site remediation when some of those functions that going to need to be done, you can be able to study. We drive us up to what type of design that that's going to be, it might you're going to need that uh information. Uh at at that part of the on new ways. So. You know, if we if if uh committee was was satisfied with that, if we put if we put in a hundred thousand for now. Uh to till we name in that project, and we'll come back with some some additional information. Uh as as we work through the budget process to see if that that portion would remain.
My only the response to that would be, we're talking about a study, not an actual remediation, correct?
Um. Well, if I if I would be uh the geotechnical city and completing the site remediation.
So my only worry with that, and I think to something that happened recently in Brockville, where. At the site of the new school and the old former Procter and Gamble site, Procter and Gamble, or not Procter and Gamble, um those cables. Those cables was required to remediate the site. They did to the standard of that day that it was remediated. And then when the new, when the school board came aboard and they wanted to put the school there and and the builders wanted to build there. The standard had changed. And they had to redo it all over again. And so if that standard happens to change between. When we do that, if we do that now and. And say we don't build one for four years and and. That standard happens to change again, then we're gonna be going back to that site and having to remediate again. That's my only concern. There's a risk there that we might be wasting that money.
There, yeah, there 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 is no doubt that there's some 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 risk, I would. Probably place that on the. Uh uh on the lower end of the risk, but no, they uh no, they have a risk. I just thought for like for for the season, instead of uh like a a a four or a one that we 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 look at at least uh.
So so that would stay on until budget. Discussion number two, and if we chose a budget number two to take it completely off, we could still do that.
Yeah, through well, throughout the, yeah, through the entire process, right?
I'm fine with leaving it off, so. So you're just suggesting that the dollar value change to a hundred thousand from three eighty five?
What 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 I like, what I would suggest is that uh direction you provide to 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 reuse that, so I'm just, I I I'm I'm putting an array of. You know, uh a a a hundred thousand as a, you know, at at least as a. As a. Mark at the right. Or you can just.
I need to hear.
Some work for me.
I need to hear more discussion, or at least I need more, because I don't know that there's, I don't know if there's support for that here, so.
Just just trying to listen.
I. Up to now, I haven't really heard any support or any clear stances one way or the other. I mean, there might be support here for three eighty five, I I don't know. Well. But I think we gotta move our way through it, and we're gonna be here till midnight, we're gonna be here till midnight at this rate, so.
That was all I was looking at.
Yeah, I know, I hear you. Um, okay, so let me do it this way, is there some? Port to leave it on there at three eighty five? Okay, so no, is there support to leave it on there at a hundred? And with the potential that you can still make another decision after further meeting two or three, whatever. You good with that?
I'm I'm agreeable with option two.
You wanna take it right off?
I wanna take it right off.
I wanna take it right off.
That's for the ship. And go agree and read it, you know, revisit other other townships.
Who do?
That's my feelings. And and I know I will.
Alright.
No, I mean, but my first instinct was to leave it off entirely, so I can go back to my original.
Yes, let's. I think everybody, but I think. Do you wanna weigh in one more time?
No.
You're good, so you wanna leave it on?
Uh.
At a hundred, okay, and three of us that are, you're okay taking it off completely with more information in the soon. Yeah. Over the next time, we see a lot of information, we can discuss it throughout the year, next year. Right.
They're the.
Yeah, I think that it's taken off. With. I think direction that. Um. Or at least the indication that we would like more information throughout the year so that we can have a, would be a pre discussion in advance of next year's budget. Okay, office upgrades. Is that what's next, or? That is probably what's next, no, I'm just doing, I'm about to go down the list, sorry. Uh so we're on to item J then, correct? And then we would be on the draft public works budget, and we are on the PSD citywide road control software now. Who will speak? Or Chris? Sorry, am I looking at the wrong one? Rick? I'm looking at the one I made my notes. Looking at the one I made my notes on, so you're telling me I should get rid of that one? Okay, so automated vehicle location global positioning system, right, is is J one? Is that right? Correct. Okay, so page eighty. Who's gonna speak to that? Chris?
Thank you, uh leader of the business case, when you were nominated, general location and global positioning system, your kind of work. Public council under road maintenance is confined with minimum maintenance standards. Established by the products in township of Redwood Retirement. It's called the country of the road inside of maintenance, including inclusion of law and application of salt and sand. Next, there are that certification of local hills. But in the state, it didn't last a plan. So in order to enhance operator's efficiency, there's a law and coverage and as you see here, the newest laws that have been implemented. Use of coordinated uh location and global system. Where individuals' vehicles in combination with control system and salt and sand application. Okay. The use of the A P L T P S system allows them to obtain the most instantaneous and continuous information. As to every ten seconds concerning the vehicle and its operating condition. But at the present time, the function includes records concerning winter maintenance activities and hard copy and front learning through diaries. And then load the coffee driver log and time for completion on staff. So so implement implementation would be would involve uh installation. And calibration A P S G, A D L would be T P S system. An operator trainer. On use of the system in summer twenty twenty four. Uh who's been. Doing a drive run to see how this system works, named Martin Brockle. And then had administered the system in uh from the procedure at the end of twenty twenty four. So the proposed uh we were doing a good life modernization planning and for the uh product to start up. And the mockway and mockway gave you from the operational. Other words. Pause.
Yep. Okay, that's good. Um. Just wanna ask a question back to this side. Is it anywhere near, or is it anywhere included on the six point three million?
Uh no, uh this would be on the operations side.
This is on the operations side.
Similar to the F M W budget software, so you see of an operating.
Okay, we're sort of on to an operating budget now, not a.
Um, I I mean, this this counter deferred until we talk about the operating budget then.
So.
Yeah.
Everything else is capital, correct?
Correct.
And we re. Does everybody wanna defer this to next? Sorry, bro.
Uh through the chair, I think the intent was to look at the modernization fund for the capital for the initial investment. Fifty six thousand in operation would be about four hundred dollars per month. Cost of the money. Service cost.
It all's going, the entire dollar value will go through the operations budget, though?
Yeah, similar to uh with V F M W software, and we see it on here in in the.
Yeah.
Because it's a software purchase, it's it's uh not capital in in the sense of what we're talking about in. Here is.
Okay, can we? If uh the, I mean, to me, this meeting was about cap, like. The capital side of the budget, so. We'll see what the group says, but do we wanna put this with the operation aside then, so we do operational with operational capital or capital? Yeah, everybody, no, I think. Okay, so um do I I need a motion to defer the this item to budget number two? Okay, so can I have somebody move a a a motion to defer item? Uh J uh J one to uh the meeting number?
You're the chair. Uh right now, we'll go for operation. Anywhere we start.
So coming over.
That's applicable, but right now, we just defer so on the first part.
Yeah, to the first operational budget meeting? So moved by councilperson Ward, seconded by councilor Smell. All over. Defer. Okay, so let's move on then to the half ton truck. Purchase.
For the four years in the business piece for our purchase of a half ton pickup truck. In Colorado, Colorado. Uh including the request for funding and the purchase of half ton truck, the focus link and for capital later. I have a truck station in car and shop, meanwhile, I started to move agents in our past. And required in the township. So we have. See, we're not getting on a union service of current brand. And we also have a. We have T one as part of the current brand at the current time, or. Well, that's yeah. Uh both of those others are in the right, uh I would consider it as an asset plan, T one of thirteen in gold. Missing me. And handle over here with ninety thousand pounds. And probably the most variable of the standards for the frame and the setting for the belt.
Yeah.
Uh, and our next up, two thousand fifty, safety, we all have zone four, but can be anyone does, probably two hundred and sixty four dollars for. And the funding for this contract went from taxation. And through uh last year, it's been proven difficult to secure vehicles. What maybe there are shortages. Uh. Staffs have been better approached to uh issue an R I P for the interim twenty four, if they can, I mean, there's never been.
Yep. It's more easier ones for me. Um, is, so there is a recommendation that the recommendation, the committee recommend the council approve option two to purchase. One half ton truck for an estimated sixty thousand dollars in the twenty twenty four capital budget and declare the T. Or the um T one, two thousand and eleven and two thousand and eight, the old rec truck. Uh. Funny enough, it's a wreck truck, uh surplus to the needs of township, um. So that's the recommendation, I need a mover for that. And we'll go on to discuss. So moved, I need a second here, second by councilor Smell, is there discussion on this?
My only discussion is so, we're not sorry about that, but.
That's.
We've we've had lots of big uh talks over the years, so uh welcome to another one. So these these other two. Trucks are not being used at all, is that kind of how I read that?
Why is why is it not being used? Recreation, it doesn't seem to be really utilized.
It is being used.
Okay.
Or is it used, okay. Yeah, I thought I read, thought I read they were both not being used, so then I was gonna say, what's the impact of just not replacing it, but uh if we're using it, yeah. Yeah, okay, I mean. Uh you know, sixty thousand bucks is fortunately the price for a pickup truck these days, if you're if you're lucky, I think. So.
Uh, frankly, I'm gonna get a half ton truck for sixty thousand dollars, I've been pricing for a week to buy one myself. And you work for seventy five thousand, hundred thousand dollars, if you're looking at a four wheel drive Ford or a truck. The sixty thousand dollars, I'm not gonna like to buy you.
What you selling?
Not a new one, I don't know. Is that right? Uh duly chaired to. Like, you're asking for sixty thousand, but it might not be a twenty twenty four. It might be a twenty twenty three or like that. Yeah, okay. I got I got caught like that last year in the recreation.
Yeah, we only need one, like, you've got two here, but one not being used, was it utilized before, like, we're using all of them.
So you should use that on C plus C the number.
Alright.
We use it season.
Okay.
So is that the part you use?
No.
Sorry, Greg.
Three to care, there's two other newer uh trucks in all that works now. Oh, so this one truck would replace up to one, well, one's mine.
Yeah.
And that way there would be the uh. All of her battery uses a truck for. Before, before what you we were doing, then to put. Thing. Uh, there's a rock, we need the profit this in. These. Action.
Anyone else? No?
So.
Good. Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so the old trucks. They look pretty rough. And they're surplus, so what happens to those things? They're pretty much. John, you're not gonna get it for them.
Don't say that.
No, fantastic.
Well, I just, my question is, with the vehicles. Why don't, I mean, have? Have any of the vehicles ever been crowned? So that they they are they crowned?
Yes.
Are they? And they still look like that?
I don't forget the.
Sorry, from team chair, those were the vehicles. Before my time in Viking Rock, I would call that. They had not been since I've been here. All the works dropped in nineteen and crowned and twenty twenty.
Because I just wondered at the end, you know, if you've driven for so long and they, the mileage might be high, but if they're still in decent shape, I would think then if they're surplus, they would still be worth. Something. As opposed to just being. Sprout.
Yeah. If we get rid of them before three hundred and ninety thousand, they might be. You got both you guys that want it.
Yeah, I did. Just to clarify, the 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 two thousand and eleven T one. Was replaced with the twenty nine T. And at the same level, we would try to keep it for a few years. And I would say in naturality, forty years in the stadium, it's time. Uh I would, I I would say that both over as a recent design, America, that may very well uh be useful to uh whoever. Um extrication training and then the strategy. In in there, being there.
Mm hmm. Okay.
This is. Do you still wanna speak?
Uh. That that's uh. I would have suggested that in in the business case that. They're not in good shape, um if there was a name over the chain, we would put you. And you would talk on that, um you also. I mean, well, you might get a.
But and and that's sort of, I I think that's the process that'll happen in option two, right, that we declared surplus, we'll figure out how to dispose of them. You guys will take care of all that, and so I I don't know, unless there's any other, I'd like to. Uh, you know, uh. Uh move the option to be honest, it's on the table. Okay, so move the recommendation.
Yes.
It has our, it has our.
Okay, so I just need to call a vote, right?
Alright, so do you, are you asking me to call the vote?
Please call a vote to do that, there's no more discussion.
Well. Okay, good, alright, then we call on there. Uh. The votes? Vote. Vote. Wanna post, three or move on? Okay, Jordan, where are we? Uh, purchase five ton platter.
Once again, we have the five ton platter. Instead of the Colorado Department, uh, including purchase five ton truck, also twenty-four budget in order to provide earnings. I think the T six is not a large. Early color for week, anything is working and, and change single half of the trucks. On five ton in one, one point five. When it takes no more operations, throw the entry. In order to maintain satisfactory service levels of truck condition, the maintenance cost should be heard with consideration. Uh, T six to the twenty fourteen international service of hundred ten axle, ten axle truck. And will reach full in my preparation in twenty twenty-six. And considered to be in poor condition from normal project standpoint, it's more recent than eight weeks to seven years. Yes, and useful life for the truck and conscious assessment and declaring this one, six hundred thousand pounds. But four. T six is nearly the power of a hundred thirty. The other caller, but if remember, when the owner created with the ten years old. I mean, they can't involve the twenty. The funding for the new one, with the location, divided people only for professional who went on board in five. Two hundred and fifty. The human mind does only make two months.
Good. Okay, so just so that I'm clear on this one, we approved one last year to be delivered this year. That's not the one we're talking, right? We're talking about one that would be delivered. Not this year, it'll be delivered in twenty twenty-five. Okay. So we already have a new one coming for this year. This would be to replace the one that has a hundred and thirty-three K on it. That has a, a very bad maintenance record or. Very high maintenance record, if I say it that way, I don't know how to say that properly, but. We've spent a lot of money maintaining, I think that's the right way to say it. Okay, alright, discussion. Who wants to go?
Okay, Chris, so when we look at the capital budget, just so we're clear, it was the three seventy and we're talking about. Half in this year and half of next year, is that everyone reserve this? Um, is there a reason why, and I don't recall us having this conversation of the truck we're already buying now? Is there a reason why we don't finance these over like five years or something like that?
Uh, through the chair, uh, that service is possible, that's uh. Uh. Another option that uh, would allow for uh. How it works to your vehicle, you say, you'll find set upon the seat, and then I would show a whole three hundred and five thousand or. Or three hundred and ninety thousand, which was in the next year's budget, of running by that. So.
Okay, yep.
With, with a four point C like Tyson, to ensure that we don't take any more. So it, it's uh, if we want to find us some trucks. We going forward, we serve.
Yeah, cause honestly, A, like that idea, and B, it means that we defer. Probably based on the lead time, all of this out until we start to in twenty twenty-six or late twenty twenty-five start paying for it, so. I, 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 I think we need to have the truck, I'd just rather we do it in a different way, so. And I guess from this discussion, leaving on there, my opinion of that. Just that it would involve debt. And. Um. But. From a debt policy, we, from a capital item, they're allowed to, for half length, right? That what we can finance over? So, fair.
Alright.
Estimated.
Yeah. And then that would soften the yearly amount, or we could continue to put that amount.
Yes, uh. If I'm industry, um. There, there are fewer real deal, no, no one the uh. Struggles of getting the uh, leads on to a, to, to a regular scheduled uh, program with respect to uh, places. Uh, I think command for the uh, to the, the last uh, five, six years, we uh, have uh. Long discussion, but we, when, when we started those places were, were on schedule and meeting. Um. With, 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 you know, six years, every new year, you sort of, you know, so to speak, and you just. Put this. Close to the thing of now, each year, one year, you're working in reserves, the next year. Did. You know, you pay for the vehicle following year, but. I think that's a good, I think that's a good option. The debt financing for a, for a vehicle that has such a short. Useful life, purpose. But other uh, assets, or linear assets that have four, two years. To me, that makes better sense.
Yeah, fine.
It's uh.
Yeah.
Um, I agree. Here we hear the operation manager on this T six. Um. What route is uh, we're closing this with the new one? Like, what does T six, what route do they do now? What does route, what does T six do right now? For God. Yeah, like, we're, we're, we're short, like, we're using a one and a half, we're using a lot of, for example, we're using a. Uh, one, one and a half ton of plow, cardon, because are we, because we're short. A truck or we're short a man, I guess, probably. So we, we buy this truck, and we're gonna have someone to fill it up.
This T six? Six.
As a spare?
This, this truck won't be able to come from five.
Okay. And, okay, that's fine, how about this, the T six? Uh, we have a whole bunch of money in it. Uh, we have a hundred and thirty, thirty-three thousand clicks on it, says it's good up to two hundred. Would we keep this as a spare? The T six? Will we sit there, sorry, will we sell it for surplus? Oh, sorry.
No.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I think, I think that's your options, there, there, there's certainly um, some discussion with respect to. Uh, when we, um. Moved away from the uh, single axle, uh, a couple of years back, uh, it's meant to be sort of a moving one time in. In a single axle, replacing with one, one five. Uh, the understanding was that it would be able to, the, the function and perform, um. Portions of the uh, of the, of, of the red, uh. It's, it's still. Questionable whether there, there was actually a reduction in, in those larger vehicles. Uh, that is, so, so, I think with uh, T six, there would be the option of. Either, you know, several options would give you an atmosphere or having that uh. Uh, and performing, the performance, and I, I think there's some, some ongoing discussion with respect to, to those second options.
I just feel that we spent so much money on it, I think we could use it, even if it's in the summer, the home grab, or something, that's.
I did, there, 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 there's certainly some, some.
Instead of selling it.
You know, I think, I think is, you know, as the, the, the decision assessment, which is based on like, um. While some of those expenses are based on the, on, on, in the, some of the compensation, to. To give the status of, I, I think it still has some, uh, some purpose.
Good, thank you. Sorry. Just trying to keep you down, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's, I'm gonna go talk about it. So Karen, anything? Any further down there? John, if you want to weigh in?
Yeah. I can leave that, yeah. Want to know a good, that we wouldn't love that, we wouldn't have time. I think it's everything to job. Proper. For, for our off, we have. Only five ton as a spare. And they're seriously considering something that. One and a half, I'm still in pretty good shades, up, up to say, and look inside yourself, uh. Thirty-five hundred, but I've gotten a plow on, I mean, I mean, that could work as you go. Thirty truck. During the year, we're not probably. When we spend, you buy a new half ton, you know. I don't know, Smale said, if you're not looking at a hundred thousand dollars for it, for. Why not? Spend a hundred and buy yourself, self a three quarter ton. Time to cover, how to power, definitely. Give it one and a half, that's all we need, or it's not.
I don't think there's any love lost to that.
But what we're to discuss is whether we want to purchase five ton cloud driver ultimately. So I think what I'm hearing is yes, right? That stays on ultimately. Absolutely. So I think it stays.
Yeah.
I I don't think, I think there's a bigger discussion that has to happen with. With the complement of vehicles doesn't sound like anybody wants the one and a half or whatever it is, the two ton, but. Whatever. Well, maybe that's further discussion later, but yeah, I don't think there's any doubt. That we want to move forward with the.
Okay.
So. Okay, so Jordan, am I right in saying we're on Jordan Road then? Okay, so. George.
Mr. Chair, so the. Your road trip. Placement case. Um, Black Creek municipal rain. My city by Jordan moved you last three eighteen hundred. Colored said water fast and west in sight. In the fall of twenty twenty-three, stat knows a small signal forming in the road about colors. And upon closer expansion in third group of color and development. Township the. Stat temporarily fixed the the signal and the rain superintendent for applying aspect structure. Uh, he had determined that the color should be replaced. Um, this sector of Black Creek. Municipal rain is closely handed a lot of force here to the G I S there in the city in the. Handout. Basically, there's a fairly large. There's a water. In the Black Creek in the dryer periods, there's low north. Cost of the call replacement would be the sole responsibility of township as project has been uh, pro right away. Funding could come from the Canada Community Building Fund for the notice of. And as municipal rain uh, that has a formula of thirty of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, staff anticipate that tender could take place in early twenty twenty-four. He was taking the best price. Back during the. The structure would begin in twenty twenty-four and to anticipate that you could play the by fall twenty twenty-four. Recommendation is that after review of the offer. Uh, option is recommending council and staff to provide the greatest superintendent authority to proceed with tendered project. Additionally, recommended the greatest superintendent be appointed contract.
Hey, thanks. Director, the um, we fixed this last year.
No.
This isn't. That was mainsville, so it's not the same.
No, this is.
Okay, so did we, did we, so we patched, we patched this one so that because we were single, we patched.
And what's a gravel in the stop sale.
Yeah.
Uh, if you think it's even that, which also there's a picture that the superintendent.
Yeah.
Superintendent taken. And you can see the corrosion on the line.
Yeah, it appears there's a couple of holes in it even too. Um.
Yeah.
There's no opportunity to reline.
There is potentially, but considering the cost of relining. Um, we've done one back, mine do a bit longer um, up in the road. And it was eighty thousand dollars for that one and seventy one. Either one to the meeting three of them. Uh, I suspect we could certainly look into having. Contract administrator add to the tender and and kind of else. Uh, I expect it will be.
Yeah. Yeah, ultimately, it's better to replace it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and they have deteriorated to the point that. They're an issue now that needs to be dealt dealt with.
Yeah, if you actually see the 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 color itself, it's hard to tell from the. It is. There's holes throughout.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it starts to go, go their last five years, their last five months. You don't know.
It's not something we can defer for a year.
All right.
It's not something that you'd suggest we defer for a year.
I would not suggest.
Or discussion at all with any? What? Their comments or something?
The merit of. Their proof.
We can't do that, John. Just because there's a problem with flow and actual area, volume of water going through. Um, it's a limited problem to look at contract. Um, the liabilities. Uh, also. With sanitation conservation authority permit in the last time. Um, it would be. It's probably not be, I'm not sure they have to be bolted together in place. The three of them. That size. Okay, that would be water repeating.
Another question I have is uh, it has to be steel, could it not be possible?
Plastic is more expensive.
But last year.
It is more expensive to play. I think it's a matter of uh. Demand.
So what's the likelihood I can say the steel?
Uh, I can't tell you exactly. There's a piece of wire. We could also look at. Oh, thank you.
Good, yeah. But I think I'm gonna just ask the question this way, does anyone want to take this off the list? Is this something that's.
I mean, all through budget.
You did, you would recommend that, George?
I would not recommend doing due to the size of that. And the back of Sweden and water.
Yeah, so it needs to make it through one, but it needs to make it through this discussion at least.
Yeah, right.
Does anybody?
That's a.
Doesn't need to make it through this one?
No, that's fair. I just have one quick question. I think one quick question for, I believe, probably the treasurer. Uh, the the grants for two eighty-two, this is the only place we could use that grant on this list essentially, is that true or is that just?
Uh, food and chair, um. No, uh, but these ones have to be assigned to a project. So I'm uh, I will file uh, reports. For these to show where the funds you still get. That was true.
That's good, that's that's fine. I agree with it. We should keep this on first for sure for the next discussion, so. Can I just?
I have a couple of questions. So what's the size of these comments?
Eighteen hundred, no, there's seven.
I'm not a chicken, but a box store in the night.
You also check and I'll. Get in conversation with the the superintendent. We could, we can maybe have something go over the tender and. Put her. The best. It it would definitely last long. And.
Fifty years.
That's.
I'm sure. I'm glad to see the price on the table, but see how the compare to not that much you're.
I agree.
Money in the long run. There, but anyway.
Yeah.
Ready them that. Something ready to. Put in.
Yep. Options, right? But it stays on anyways, you're in favor of moving it on. And Karen, did you have anything you wanted to?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so I think it's pretty clear that with the, I'm not gonna deal with recommendations at this point, I'm just gonna keep moving, so. Um, clear to leave that one on. Uh, I think the idea might be that that in the RFP, there's maybe there's some suggestions, but I think. We'll probably have to discuss that further than other budgeting. Uh, Reed Street. Those construction and water service with.
Mr. Chair. So the Reed Street, we could start the water service replacement. All the words in environment and certain department including replacement of water services and reconstruction. Propose to include for capital budget. Um, recently, because in Cardinal, I'm sure everybody's aware um, between Dundas and. The section where state and all. Um. Residential complaints are increasing due to. deteriorate condition of the road. Past. Year, frequent water services have developed under Reed Street guidelines. Uh, due to the radio installation with them, polyvinyl chloride plastic service lines. Above all the water. Standard term seven uh, did not require installation of type two copper on public property is now required in by law twenty thirteen sixty-nine. The water inside the main is reconstructed with PVC material that needs current standards to go this week. It is the fact that the road base course is inadequate on Reed Street uh, which is different in service direction. Actually, eight hundred fifty millimeters will A and D grab replaced system is clearly in five. There's a little picture around there below just to kind of show the. Road. It is the second. Uh, been there under that whole set of kind of with broken PVC lines and it's been promoted to save. Definitely gonna have a keeping stop. It's quickly. From cracking give all our infiltration. Um, there is a. Uh, little just picture there showing the project area and some of the water. Um. Findings of the project is through combination reserves, unit rates, compensation. After secure and qualified contract administrator. Ten for the. If you're a local work. For who we do some proper water service replacement on Reed Street. On regulation that committee recommends that council dot option one will reconstruct and water service replacement. Uh, direct staff to play in both. Contracting a qualified contract.
Good, thanks, Bert. Um, question first. Um. I think recommendation. The way that I read it goes just from Joseph to Dundas.
Correct.
Is there a reason that Benson to Joseph wasn't included in that as well?
Because that actually has a cast part of it. The section from Dundas to uh. Joseph Street is PVC water PVC pipe. So there's whole pipe. Sixties. Vintage probably under that small section.
Because that whole road would be brand new other than that one section, it's starting to fall apart too.
If you would. Very light, but um, you know, we could end it with water break started to do that. Um, on this, on the cast iron pipe, so you can. You know, put an overlay on it, but. Uh. You can drop that.
Okay, that was, that that explains. Why I just, it just would be nice to go right from the edge of East all the way around to Dundas and it'd actually be one smooth surface instead of. Patchwork. Because, I mean, Reed Street, as you get to Dundas Street, it's turning into a gravel road and it's in terrible shape, so. Okay, uh, discussion, this one's. Um, anyone? Replacement of the pipes, right?
Um, could we chair to the operation manager? Um, we have an estimate cost of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. But on our capital budget, it's a hundred and seventy-eight. Is that eighty-six thousand, seven fifty, the difference for paving? Or no?
There's a breakdown, you can see.
Sorry?
These are very. Uh, based on. Recent projects.
But I'm just saying that you had it in your, in your capital budget at a hundred and seventy-eight, oh, sorry.
Yeah, it gets split between two budgets, right? As part of it is under rate base. So if you go to the capital budget, um.
One seventy-eight.
Yeah, like there's the one seventy-eight for for Reed Street and then on. The rate based one. Uh, for Cardinal, uh, Reed Street Water Service Replacement, so about a hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty. So it's split between two budgets.
I don't, I don't see that. Sorry? Page eleven?
Yeah. On the Cardinal water system.
Oh, Reed Street. Yeah, 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 okay. Thank you, sir.
It has to be split between.
Still doesn't matter.
Okay. Thanks.
So what was the math on that again?
Two sixty-four.
And the, so two six, so the two sixty-four should match the one seventy-eight, should it not?
Uh. The two sixty-four plus contract administration. Which is split fifty fifty between them. So two ninety-one. Two sixty-seven, sixty-three is the total. It's on page one fifteen at the top, you've got contract administration, it's that instruction. Pretend to tell. So the actual total is two ninety-one, sixty-seven, and that's what's split between.
Okay, and that, then that math adds up. I was, I was still on page one fourteen going, the math doesn't. At least for a page break.
Yeah.
Okay, I had it boxed on this. Okay, so. I uh, I am a one hundred percent, um. I think it's option. I think it's option. One. Four, I think it was option one. Yeah. No, one, one, it's option one, right? With the, that's the copper, to replace the copper. Get all that done, that way we're not cutting brand new pavement.
Yeah.
Keep it in the book for now. I think it's.
Yes, uh, yeah. Um, for the reconstruction, is there any way we can jump on? Because I think it's very important that we do it. Is. Can we jump on the homeowners to say, hey, we're doing this? Come, come summer. Can we change your lines going from the, from our place in? Is that possible? Something, something like to change other lines from, from what's?
All right, through the chair, be from a property line to the residents?
Yes.
Uh, we typically wouldn't do that in fast practice. Um, they typically would look at the uh, wherever the contractor is. And ask if they could make an agreement with any residents and residents. And and do that work, it's work.
Okay, but it's possible we can do that to get it all changed now when we, when we're there.
We can't make the resident.
We can't make, I I realize.
So bad and so easier if they have the opportunity to space and contact.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know, yeah, yes.
The other issue, so I I think the. Uh, the earlier that that's decided that we would go forward with this, then it certainly um. Uh, would be something that we could, we we could provide letters. Residents on on Reed Street indicating that we are replacing the uh, the service from the main to the. To to the property line, they they want to consider that in either Apple Plumber or or something else on site.
Could you keep them?
To do the, to do the remainder.
Yeah, it just makes sense. We gotta dug up, you go from there, they're.
Well, it it certainly depends on 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 the what what the resident can afford at the time.
No.
Give me all services where where we actually had to hold back number of height. At the, at the property line because the resident wanted to maintain that.
Right. Yeah, right. You want to add something here?
Yeah, for the chair, I'm a number of the dicks you actually know, the size is uh, they don't have PVC on our side, they should copper.
So may not need to. Yeah, you can be excused, yeah. I don't think we're gonna do anything with it. Um, so, so when you say the expectancy, like, are we, are we talking that you want pre, preapproval then tonight to move forward with this one?
No, 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 no. It's just like once, once we know that that project. Isn't go forward, then, you know, I think we would just send, send.
Yeah, I think that this is one where there's gonna be very little difference of opinion on. I think everybody believes that this one's long overdue, so. Okay, so then. Um, that one stays in very clear. Uh, we're on Weir Road Bridge Repair.
Probably part is including Weir Road Bridge Maintenance and Repair Project for the twenty twenty-four cash budget or. Correct efficiency, extend asset life and improve the overall project's risk status. In early May of twenty twenty-two, we still have Bridge Management Corporation set up within O S I M. It's Ontario Structure Inspection Mango uh, inspection of the township's fourteen bridges and large columns. Uh, resulting report identified the Weir Road Bridge as a priority for maintenance and repair in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. It's a picture of that uh. Evaluation. The report varies deficiencies, rise recommended by the company for less than my level of capital use cost. That's my great girl. The reporter, he said, expansion portion, uh, she took a date in twenty twenty-three. Had an estimate of one hundred. Contract administration contingency for total hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Um, the balance of the record is recommended for twenty twenty-four. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, council approved funding for expansion joint. This is the new app I have in the work, the original bridge drawings required under date design. Uh, ministry preparation of consulting the drawings for between. Keystone Bridge had a couple more detailed inspected and found the deficiency agreement that noted in the last I M visual perspective. So. The last time M inspection is just available, if they wonder in the spec that they go to. Uh, the more detail they actually used the exploitation, did measure on some little bit more in depth uh, investigation. So they uh, did that's gonna give and compared to similar projects that they had undertaken in the detailed inspection. Keystone Bridge estimated re- mediation of over a million dollars. Uh, expected that the year of old issue, bridge will extend the length of the bridge shop for fifty years. Funding for the Weir Road Bridge remediation portion realized through their own C I F funding. Um, the design is underway and request for Keystone Bridge provided full. Uh, estimate to undertake contract administration is all for then fifty thousand dollars based on an hour rate. Uh, expected that if approved, generally, you see uh, could begin your work. Recommendation that many different visit council, one accepted option two. US staff to proceed with the tendering remediation of the Weir Street Bridge and. Do contact Keystone Bridge Management Corporation, go to the tender and then contract administration of the project.
Good, thank you. Um. On page one twenty-one, it says that the replacement value of the bridge. Is one point six million. Is it safe to say that that's an old estimate and it's not, no longer accurate?
That I believe came out of the.
Really? Because it estimates that it has forty-one years left in lifespan. We're about to put a million dollars into a bridge. That's more than. Half of its actual value.
Now, O S I M is a given, is a visual and just uh, uh. As uh, equated to a P M of a truck as a uh. As opposed to a C D O R structure. So it's, it's more into the details uh, estimation used, it's not whether. Uh, calculating span and so forth, but the actual both reports are attached in this. Uh, O S I M first and then the more detailed report of the actual readings and so forth. There are some issues.
Okay, let's have a discussion. Karen, I'll start it here.
We went from the, I mean, I know we talked about this before and and putting it in the twenty twenty-four budget for this, this seven hundred. Or seven. Seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars or whatever it was. But now we're up over a million. I don't know. I don't know enough of. Bridges to. To know, when I look at the, the report that they did before, I went through it. Soldering for a while. And just the percentages of. Of things that were, you know, it was minor this and minor that, damage five percent and so on, so I don't. That wasn't until you get down to the, the X joint. Where it was eighty percent. So. Whether the whole thing needs to, I I just don't know.
Yeah, I felt, I felt the sort of something. Uh, Debbie?
Yeah, I just, my own concern is inspection date was May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. And his comments was it is recommended that the bridge receives a major rehab within two years' time. And so here we are. Twenty twenty-four. Pretty close. Few years. So you know, when you take his comments, uh. I think it's Steve. Uh, Steve Reed. Is, you know. And staff is recommending. That's a tough. Do you think we can go another year? Oh.
I'm through the chair.
Or have it re-inspected?
I'm not an engineer or inspector, that was the recommendation of.
I know that, I know, yeah. Yeah. Could we? Get this uh, bridge inspection report back? Another one? See how this Stephen Reed and see where we're at? So do we take the recommendation of? Twenty twenty-two, two years, you better do something.
Through the chair, but they do whatever council wants to do. But there's a risk involved more deterioration. And. And so I I just, my recommendation is based on that. Keystone Bridge Management has done all heart bridges.
Is, what, what's a bridge inspection report? Like, what's it, is it expensive?
Um, I can't tell you. Top lane is something people could. For a hundred thousand dollars for the O S I M, but that's just the visual. Uh, this last one, he just got done doing.
This one that we did from uh. We were uh, this Stephen Reed, is, is that the five grand? The visual one on page uh, one twenty-one? Of one eighty-nine?
This was done by, by the corporation. I'm not sure what their, who they sent out for an agent, but the. The main engineer, it's uh, Mr. Quay.
Okay, so he probably sent these people out to do the inspection? I, I, I feel a little bit better if I knew or. If, if they said, hey, you guys are, 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 you know, you're at your, your limit, two years, we told you, you're at your limit. Then I, I like to keep it, but if, if we can get one more year and they say, no, no, twenty twenty-five is okay. And you know, it hasn't, it hasn't gotten any worse than. I like to put it off to to twenty twenty-five, but I kind of like to have another. Report to see where we are. Someone who does it for a living, so. That's my recommend, that's, that's just me now up here, so.
Um, just, I'm just gonna, before we go any further, there's no restrictions, no weight restrictions, no, there were no modifications. Made to travel that goes over the bridge at this point, right?
There was a mention also. Approaching maximum. And when, and there were some uh. Mention of the. Spread in the girders of different.
Yeah, is the, is the more detailed report more recent? Or is it?
Yes. Yes, it was just um, probably month ago.
A month ago. But at that time, they didn't recommend any weight restrictions.
No, they, they recommended that, it is through the purpose right then, it's doing its job.
Right.
But the thing is that it's subject to the here. Generation.
Yeah.
With without.
Sure, sure, but as of a month ago. They didn't feel the need to put any restrictions on it at this time.
Not at this time.
Okay, cool. Um, I guess this question's actually, first question is to the treasurer. Um. Uh, I believe anyways, this, this seven ninety-four that's associated with this from the funding and the grants perspective. This is particularly boy, this bridge, am I wrong about that? I thought that one particularly in response for that. The, the seven hundred ninety-four thousand dollar grant money, is that, that specifically for the bridge, is that?
No, uh, C I F.
Associated, okay.
Uh, general fund that's like the C C D I have allocated to specific projects.
Okay.
So the Weir Road Bridge is already in there because we had it for twenty twenty-three and heard it. So I've already got this project registered per se with those.
Right, but last year, we had it registered. Right, but last year, we had it registered last year. This, so in other words, this money is sort of tied to this bridge unless people change that.
Aside the last reason. Not necessarily.
Okay.
There there's flexibility in these programs, but that that's just. One of the projects that was identified.
Yeah, I don't know. This this one sure keeps me up at night thinking about it once in a while, but um I I just, it's a bridge, you know, it's not a road that we can.
Mm hmm.
You know, so I'm concerned about that aspect of for sure.
So like another assessment.
My mission. Be worthwhile at least to to have us follow up with the. Uh, Keystone Bridge. Get their assessment with respect to uh. Extend again than uh uh another year. I think the I think the uh. The deterioration will will continue to happen. It's just not going to deteriorate uniformly. It may it may reach a point where you 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 extend here and now you're into substantially. Uh, a bigger project. To get that one here back to what it is. So uh maybe if we can get a a little better gauge on on their assessment from uh. From a month ago, what they're feeling is with respect to that sort of rate deterioration uh and you know, turn that back. We just leave it as as it is for the while.
We'll we'll have that in time for our next budget meeting.
Uh, we. We will aim to try to have that by January, by fifth, if not, we will have it before the beginning of November.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, very good.
All right, let's move along into road reconstruction. Nobody seems to want to speak to it.
Sorry.
And all the other ones have been made so far, but.
Um, so. PC Council that if I road reconstruction and township that one of their top mandates. Public work department has provided lists and roads for consideration based primarily on road management plan. Unless attached include high level estimates totaling three billion five hundred eighty six thousand two hundred and forty two dollars. Uh, for proposed capital or twenty twenty four capital budget consideration. Um, in twenty twenty one, the budget of hundred three thousand dollars was included for a million reserving on Edison Avenue in Investor Park. Uh, some would do budget approval, read the last amount of large expansion on site located at that. At the end of Edison Avenue, uh, expansion included installation of additional large basins, towers, wires, etc. Uh, in twenty twenty two, uh. Sorry, um. Yeah, so it was still basically the chief of post bone, uh, there was not put any certainty of physical damage from this. In twenty twenty two, our township partnered with the United Counties to include Edison in their tender. Um, asphalt prices vary considerably and the north price can be at two hundred dollars a ton, which is quite expensive. And that's what increased the funding, the money of approximately hundred forty thousand from hundred and three and increase thirty six percent. Um, so this uh that's to be for. In twenty twenty three, C N A in partnership with Norris Randall, who operate total rights road from gravel to H B C pavement over two years then. Being about road costs should be split on a fifty fifty basis. In twenty twenty three, these council allocated township share under thirty thousand dollars that are fifty profit and pitching rapid addition. Uh, with the intent to include the H B C surface in the twenty twenty four budget. Estimated share uh of the cost for twenty twenty four was a hundred twenty five thousand six hundred and thirty dollars per unit. Now. Incorporated meditation, uh, staff anticipate a ten rate to take place in early twenty twenty four in order to obtain the best part of the construction after security contract administrator. Construction would be in the spring of twenty twenty four and is anticipated to play by the fall twenty twenty four. Recommendation after review of the option staff are within the council review, the list of options to determine acceptable budget for the work. Uh, is recommended included accident. In select cases, staff like I'm in that that sort of called by contract, Mr. Rader, the.
And thanks, Director. Um, question about before we go into the weeds here. The uh Totum Ranch Road portion, but we. Um. Had confirmation from North Brendel that they are going to do. That project.
Not at this point. I'm not sure that they haven't spent a dollar one while in their original, but I will follow up with you.
Can we follow up in advance of budget meeting number two, so that if it doesn't need to be on the list, we can we can get it off that list? Yeah, and if it and if it isn't for sure, because in my list it's for sure. But I I mean, if we have the opportunity to pave something else, because we're not going to pave that, I'm sure I'd like to get that one, so. Great, uh, and then. Yes?
I think. Uh, I just want to. Want to get into. Too far into the weeds on the, but if we can uh give a sense of what uh. The powerful dollar value would be uh for twenty twenty four, we could, you know, maybe with direct staff return with a couple of options. I don't anticipate uh that three point six million uh of all markets in in one year. So.
I think uh. I think six point three, put six point three in front of us. With the ability to do four. Right? And we know that we've been. You know, had thirty five percent too much placed in front of us. But every single one of these comes with a recommendation to approve. And so I'm struggling from my chair. Right? When everyone comes with a staff recommendation on approving it and we know that we can't. So my thought at this point is like. All of K, I see no way that we don't approve, right? To me, all of K is is a non discussion. Not that I don't want to hear the business case for everything, but I certainly think all of those need to be done. Um, I'm I'm frustrated at this point with with the process a little bit. Um. And I think that there's no way that we can sit here at this table and argue one way or the other about which road we think should be paved. I really think that that recommendation should come from staff. I really think. What we should do is if the number we're going to settle on is four million, we should, at this point, we probably should just say back to you guys. Why don't you bring us something that's at four point two million so that we don't have to sit up here? And go through this, because this is getting. It's unproductive at this point to have a million dollar project and put in front of us, and we don't know whether we can actually have it. Last year, we're going to make decisions and if. And if the director comes back and says that that can be deferred another year, it's going to change the way that we look at the rest of what's here. Shouldn't we know that before we go any further? I'm just struggling and it that's nine, ten and frustrated, sorry.
No, uh. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's all like, you know, there there's not very many things that couldn't go one more year. Like if you don't do a road, it's not going to disintegrate completely and be 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 closed. Same same type of law, so. Same type of same type of thing with the bridge, you know, it's it's that same philosophy of the thought of a vehicle. Can you get one more year as a vehicle? Likely you can get one more year. People don't know what's going to cost. Uh, more in 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 operation maintenance. So I get that potentially uh the 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 wording of the recommendations could have uh. Could have been done differently and I'll take I'll take that responsibility uh with respect to whether it's an item that uh is of interest. In in the budget, if there's additional information that uh that members require to make more important decision. Or if there's a feeling that that particular area needs to be stopped now. So. I understand that frustration and maybe uh the the simplest uh. Starting point maybe instead of the three point five million more for for roads, it is a a level that, you know. If if many people are doing uh at the starting point, one point five to one point eight million of 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 roads. Will look at that that brings back that option and if you want to work in a few other roads, uh. As we get to the down to uh uh closer to the up nails. It comes back much easier.
Meaning. Uh, I. I think I'm just going to go back to what I. What I said and. The idea is that we're going to land between four and uh four and four point two, I think. We got six point three in front of us. So far, nobody said no to anything. I don't know how we get there. This is not productive because we're just going to do it again in budget meeting two and budget meeting three. So I don't.
Yeah, so I I I would say through the chair, they are one, one, they. They committed discussion to be at a uh the manager remaining four point. You know, four million and four point three million that were to return with uh at the. Um, from a capital side and. That direction provided, we will have, we we will return that that model of the budget.
Well, the the reality of this C E O, the way that I see it is we're being asked to cut thirty five percent of the day to get to a number that we can actually afford. And that's really difficult to do. I mean, I don't mind making decisions, but that's a lot of decisions to make. Like especially if the bridge comes back and needs to be replaced, it changes this entire budget. Anyone suggestions?
Well, the one thing you haven't uh got, we. Never. On the last council when you were on, we had. In the old age, the council, we had a road study. These were going off. But. Council had to make the decision what road they want to fix that that year. When all the roads, road superintendent given a prior, his priority, this in one, two and three. Which ones? Were going, in his opinion, was going to cost the most to maintain for the next year, which you'd save the most dollars by fixing. So that's the one thing I. So you see here, they're all the figures there, you can add the buck, you can run a company, whatever amount you want to spend. But. You get into politics, so that's my road, I want that fixed, and that's somebody's road I want that fixed. And a lot more discussion. Arguing if it's if the road superintendent and works manager to list that was the number one priority road, that's going to cost a lot of money to keep it fixed. For the next year. Might help your decision, because you can't just to this, because they're puppy triggers and I've got a worse roads that need the most attention. Like somebody has known, you drive them, you guys see. Why you probably know better than any or any of the sitting at the table here at the road. He had to do the most work on maintenance of this, but. Roads manager to the driving of every day. You know how much money he spent on on that road every day and not for affection or. Or the controller fiction or. Just a suggestion.
Thanks, Ryan. What? Debbie?
I don't know what to say because I agree everybody wants a road to be. And usually that bridge, so where do you go from there?
Chris? Uh, so you know, in in, you know, same thing that that council. Right? Not cancel anymore. You know, uh, you know, we do need, you know, the the experts on the roads to tell us this. I mean, this is in in no specific order from what I can tell. It's maybe by a location, general location area, um, a priority of this would be would be great. Uh, as as a first statement, I'm, like I said, I am worried about the bridge because I don't want to sit here. Six months down the road and say, hey, we've had to limit the traffic on the rear road because of this bridge. Uh, I don't want to be here saying that, so I think that's a huge prayer as far as I'm concerned. And as far as the rest of the roads go, my 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 first instinct, and it's probably just because of numbers, okay, is. You know, cut out all the road work that needs to be done on Cedar Road now, and we're sitting around four point four million at that point in time, so. But because we've also taken out by the number two. And that's just my my general statement to that, so, you know, I have an opinion, but uh I I just think that to 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 Mr. Hunter's point. Um, we don't know the priority of each of these roads, so. I take it from that perspective that, you know, if we're looking at it from a financial perspective, that one road out of there and the rest of them are basically within achievable spending distance. I think. And and I know it's not a great road. And I I think I did the exact opposite because it was a must have from, so, right, so. That's why it's not.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
I just, I just did some, you know, some of my own, the roads that I traveled and I mean. I I come two point one million. Uh, so I cut what three point six million, cut off just by. Traveling the roads that I've traveled. And, you know. There's over a million and a half. My uh my concern is 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 weird bridge for sure. Uh, if if we can get something from them saying that we can, it can go another year. Um, we know the roads like like uh. Our C E O says every road, but I don't believe every road. I mean, there's some, we've got to do something for Aaron Strong Road from Crowder to. To uh Rock for sure, that just happened, that that's one and, you know. I think all Cardinal too, so there's there's options here, no question. Um. Look to bring something back, go ahead, yeah.
Go through the chair. Uh, I apologize for bringing up that number of roads. Um, that wasn't my intent to decide that we should be doing the other ones this year. It came out of the a five year plan and actually for the next five years, it's four roads, more four roads. Uh, but doesn't get that year taking shift. Um, and as far as a priority, there was there is a road rating on this, which comes from the road management plan. The higher the number, the higher the priority. So just by the the road management plan was developed in in twenty twenty. Uh, you can see in the first column there, the road rating where Cedar Road uh is probably the highest rating, which means that. There was a number of things that go into those road ratings, uh, one of them is the average dating, uh, annual average annual dating travel. So the number of vehicles per day to use that road, uh, Cedar Road, that's one of the higher ones. And that also affects the class. The other things are visual inspections, drainage and and things that were. And some of them are are the young roads you promised. But there is a priority, uh, for the roads. And and I mentioned, it's not the intent that you choose them all. It's there are some slatches that have brought up from residents and from council. But they wanted to see these roads included, but those roads may not necessarily be the highest priority according to that plan. So the reason I gave this selection was that you could choose, uh, if you do have roads and you really want that done. For for whatever reasons that they didn't tell me as well. Though those numbers for the road rating is is basically an indication of what the road management plan says to do.
Right? Yeah, it's in.
I follow page one.
So it's. No, it's.
So. One, uh, through the chair to Gordon. Who does the road rating?
This was done as the uh. Per rule management plan. Uh, in number one, the vision, uh, like Mr. Reed, they have been plenty of one. So reviewed again and now it's a few years later, so you know, some of the votes changed and so forth. Uh, I don't, I'll be honest with you, all the incidents, uh, actually those roads. Uh I don't know, to be honest, if you all the incidents, I actually put those roads according to unknown supervisor. Not while I'm in that sense, but uh I went from that plan and went through the last. I have descriptions of what uh they should have treated that those times, some of those needing others. Uh these are that card will be the opposite of that, that some of these little staff cast very light, so. Do you want to uh put a a surface on it and possibly confine it as a council through a team of people that's mixed up? Uh or do you wanna waste people there, do you afford that reconstruction, change the plans, do it that way? But any of the costs, it's uh extremely high. So depending on what your flavors or how you wanna do the roads, it may last for twenty years, you don't know when it has to. So it's and other ones are for example, uh a couple of those are current that have cement road underneath the ash wall. So any profound in that cement road is gonna come through into the ash. Um you can't really efficiently take that also, the the idea of this would be to do a milling job. Build that ash ball up and go to top. You also have to compensate up the sidewalks. You can't just put asphalt on top and then you're losing your hind side part. And you could have a lot of floating inside, so it's it, so there are just removals involved in some of these estimates. And they're very high level, there's removal of existing base. Uh to that group and in some cases you you you're removing sands that you put ground. And to make it stronger with a big base to put up on top. It was lots of examples of it, you know. And the base are are existing infrastructure that's still on and other things, uh there's a quite good case. There's the whole thing that became forgotten. There's a lot in the. There there's also been a lot of income last year, there are two in the last. What level, these these estimates are based on the game level of snows and what it is enough. If you want to be on that, make it smaller, release a stop, it's it's working. Like as for example, that's one of the reasons that this is kind of taking on. We know the same.
Yeah, I know where we have to get it. And we have to get four million. I'm just not sure how we're gonna get there.
So I I I I would say for tonight that it uh. It remains and we will uh. As a video for further further discussion, but we'll 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 try to look at uh a few requirements with respect. What uh what are recommendations would be with respect to a program.
Yeah, I I mean, I think ultimately two. Whether we like it or not, needs needs versus wants, right, like what we have to have versus what we might like to have.
Yes, I think I think there's no easy um. Uh program and have some roads that were that that were brought up uh through the previous year. Items that we should be working at. Um we were the end of this evening session, I'm not sure there's a a perfect starting point. It's just put it all, put it all in here, knowing that. It's it's not achievable, right right off the bat, but there were uh a couple of areas that it was just like. This has to go, but forward this year, as we have done as starting point, we'll develop something in regard to that. If you need one.
No, two, there are pre discussions. Um that. That there seemed to be an indication that there was a will for a continuation of docs and the potential for. Um you know, potential, you know, accessible docking, that that sort of stuff that. At the waterfront to continue along with the work that's been ongoing there and there's nothing included in either. The page ten overall capital and there's nothing on any of these business cases. Are we ex are we expecting to see that in an operational site somewhere or? Or is it just not been included?
Through the through the chair. Uh those business cases will be presented in uh. It was just too much to get off the line here, so I mean, I'm wrapped, we'll move on to the next.
Okay, so we will see, we'll see that later, okay.
That's under capital too?
Yeah, that will be number two of January.
All right, so do you need direction or is it? To get to four point two or what do you need us to tell you to get to four point two or the things you want us to tell? I mean, I think it's been pretty clear what we so far that we wanted off, but. It's still not gonna add up to two point three million. Right?
Was an option to take it off.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind some options, but I I don't think we'd ever get through this list. Especially with the million. The million has to stay in, I think with the million out, maybe, but with the million in. Okay, so can we move on to K then? These are all, are these all business cases as well? So.
You touched on it earlier and these. None of these looked substantially, oh, look. Yes, I don't have any, I don't have any issues with any of these on this, I'm just gonna section K at all, to be honest. I don't know if that's a true statement that everybody else was.
Hear me out for one second. Out of respect to Mr. Rimmer, I I know there's work that's gone into preparing business cases and I very. I won't say it this way, I'll say it, I'll say it better. I I love hearing staff present the reports, I love making sure that the work that they put in gets recognized by the committee. Do we wanna do it a different day or do we wanna do, because I have no, like, I've read the reports, what what's in here? A hundred percent, I have no issue with supporting every single one that's there. I just don't wanna disrespect you by not allowing you to present the reports.
The chair, I it's uh many guys reviewed the the business plan that are happy that I. Was happy to uh follow, having followed.
I just don't want you to feel disrespected by, I know you put a lot of work into your reports. I know every single time you've come here, they're clear, they're concise and they're very well presented. I just don't want you to feel disrespected that we didn't take the time to do them. To me, it's they're super easy, they're no brainers, they're absolutes. Are you, are you comfortable?
John?
Yeah, I always.
So I think we just say, you know, like, I think everybody feels the same way and I.
They all stay and they all go. Right, okay.
They all stay.
No, no, they're. It's a done here, one, two, three, four, five, is that right?
I think we can move past those easily, I mean. Maybe we should have started.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, so then we're on to council inquiries and notices of motion then?
We are.
We are. Does anyone have an inquiry or an notice of motion?
Uh just the first inquiry I have to be there to uh. Seeing a mic is not here, C A O like this, uh we purchased a truck, put a plow on it for the recreation park. And uh my concern is I went to the roads department. And went or to you to see if we could have the road at the Legion Plow. For people to walk down there every day, like I walk there every day in the morning, there's nine of us down here. With dogs and there's more than that to go throughout the day and I, every one of us clean up our dogs' messes. This morning I went down there and all eight people were right on me because it was a plow. Now, I know that the roads department is shorthanded and so I commanded to see you day, but I ended up talking to the clerk. Like if we're paying, we put a plow on that recreation truck, is there some reason why? When he comes in just to do those two parking lots at the rigs, he couldn't get down there and do that one road? Like, is that a union thing or does that have to go through?
Operationally, it's something that we would have to, we would have to look at and make sure that we coordinate.
Yeah, we've already decided this, right, we had this discussion in the past.
Yeah.
And it gets plowed when there's time to plow, it's it's the very last thing that gets done. We've we've had that discussion, it's not a main priority. It will get plowed, but it'll get plowed after everything else is done and everything else is done to the satisfaction and when. And there's employee time, if there's a snow event, it won't get, won't be the first thing to get that.
No, I didn't expect that.
But it will, but it just won't be, it won't be right, it may take a day, it may take two before it gets there, but but it's it's not. I I we've had this discussion, I don't know if we've had it in.
No.
But we definitely had, we definitely had that discussion because it wasn't getting plowed at all. Um and we we did have have a long discussion over whether it did and it became like. Down and forth a little bit, but we decided, well, you remember as well, John, I think. Uh that we would do it, but it wouldn't be. It would be after everything else was cleared, the sidewalks were done, our our actual things that we have to maintain to a certain. Service level get done, once those are done, then we go in, we go in and do that. And I think if that's related to people that it properly. That, you know, we do maintain our sidewalks and maintain the roads and get them to where we need to and then we'll come back and do that. That was the the other, otherwise it just didn't. Now, if you want it to be a bigger discussion and you want it to come onto a committee where we where we have, where we try to make it into more of a priority, I'm happy to entertain that discussion. But I think I think that that's where we were on the last.
I think I'll also. Was. My kind of Louis down at that time, maybe follow your own path and lot, but that took. That guy over the right to. Before their flower was locked, they had contracts, first of them, they were seeing the ring and. And new itself, so that half hour was a case of that part a lot. That half hour that he's not getting that ring, maybe it's the. The huge students on, yeah.
Essentially, there's a crash for. Potentially, I think she does, sure. Did you have a second one?
Yes, uh through the merit of the C A O, just wondering, uh is there any way that the. Staff could do do a comment. Favor counsel for the merits.
I think I can. If you want me to to do it, I I think that um as part of uh ongoing discussions when it comes to succession planning and grid review. Um that that um it should be part of that discussion as we move forward. So so yes, right, ultimately, we we will get there, it's it's part of that. Um when we go into closed session, we do. Succession planning and and the potential grid, the grid movements and the grid changes, it'll all be part of that special. Yeah, it'll be just for council, but it'll be for, yeah, it'll be an entire organization. Okay, there a third one? Did you have one?
Uh yeah, I just don't know if it qualifies as a notice of motion or anything, I I would like to see. Um of the longer range forecast, the budgeting forecast for twenty twenty five, I would like to see an entry in there for. Let's call it for now Spencerville Recreation Initiative. Uh T B to me determined, I have to work with some people, I wanna figure out what we wanna do there, but I'd like to put something in there in the vicinity of. You know, and I'm just basing it on the cost, which is for say two hundred fifty thousand dollars a placeholder for now, so we can discuss that.
For next year, for next year's budget, yep. Staff, it's the, and I think that we can have that discussion as a pre discussion, a pre budget discussion, but I have a problem with that, I think. We're, I think we all support um trying to find a way to do more recreation. Yeah, so it's, oh, I just don't know that it's in budget for this year.
No, 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 but there's there's no.
But we wouldn't be right with what Brian has. Essentially going with with that, is there something bigger to write and tag team with them?
And I have ideas, but I'd like to hear from more people first.
Well, I think you have the committee to have that discussion.
I do, I do, that's a different conversation, but yeah, I've said it, but I don't know where I've been along the way, so.
Yeah, I think we just can do that easily, give actual full on direction. Is there any other inquiries? Okay, uh no mayor's report, moving on to question period, there's no questions, clerk, no. Okay, we'll move on to somebody who has the closed session.
It's gonna proceed all such, proceeds into closed session, let's be. Uh moved by myself and seconded by councillor Waddy Snell, that uh committee proceeds into closed session at. Uh nine thirty six P M. In order to address a matter pertaining to A, section two thirty nine to B, personal matters about an identifiable individual. Including municipal or local board employees, specifically employee benefits entitlements and B, section two. Uh street turn eight to B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, specifically succession planning.
Thank you, I will call the question to go into closed session, then we'll take a five minute break or a ten minute break, whatever requires, all in favor? Okay, we're we're being closed and we're on to.
Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Waddy Snell, that the closed session. Meeting of committee does now adjourn and the open meeting does now resume at ten thirty seven P M.
Thank you very much, and so I guess I have to call the question to that.
Correct.
So uh coming out of closed session, back into open session, I'll call the favor or the question all in favor, okay, we're all in favor. And unanimous, um so uh coming out of closed session, committee met. Um to discuss section two thirty nine to B personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including. Uh municipal or local board employees, specifically discussing employee bound uh benefit entitlements. Uh we we received uh information uh from from legal and we gave direction to. Uh the C A O, um we also met discussing uh item B, section two thirty nine to B. Personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, specifically succession planning. Uh we received again information uh from legal and we gave direction both to legal and uh to. Uh the clerk, I believe. Correct, yes, and that's the reporting out. Um I think we can go to adjourn, correct, yes.
Uh thank you, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Ford, that the committee now does adjourn at ten thirty nine P M.
Cool, passing along favor, favor, we're adjourned.